Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission for Thursday, October 24. For those of you who do not do this with us every other week, the way this works is we have a few things to take care of sort of right here at the beginning, and then as we get to the cases to be heard individually, we'll ask each applicant to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what they're here asking for. We may have questions of that person. If there's somebody here who wants to speak either for or against the item, we'll ask them also to come forward, give us their name and address, and tell us what they have to tell us. We may have questions for that person. And we may talk amongst ourselves, and we'll call for a vote, and each item will be voted on in turn. If you have a phone with you, now is a really good time to turn it off, and I would ask that you do that, please. If you do want to be heard on an item on the agenda, you'll find a form that looks like this on the table out in the lobby, and if you'll fill it out, it just got some very basic information, sort of your name and address and the item you're here to be heard on, that'll help us keep track of where we are and who wants to be heard and so forth. First item on the agenda is the receipt of the minutes.
Move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the October 10th meeting of the Planning Commission. Cast your votes, please. They are received. For some reason, my light's not lit up. Oh, because I'm not voting. Yes, okay. Those are received. We have a few items for continuance, things that will, that appear on the agenda but will not actually be heard today.
We have several uncontested requests. The first is item 23, SPOD 1160 deferred to November 14th. Item 24, SPOD 1163 also to November 14th. 25, V18 deferred to November 14th. Item 26 deferred to November 14th. Also, item 27 deferred to November 14th, and item 28 deferred to November 14th. Item 29's been withdrawn, and item 30 has been withdrawn, and we have one new request for continuance. That's item 16, requested to defer to November 14th.
Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on any of those I actually do have someone signed up to be heard on item number 27. Is it Martin B.? Did you want to be heard today, or were you?
I'm sorry?
Okay. So 27 will be heard on November 14th. Okay. Thank you. That being the case, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve continuances as read.
I have a motion and a second to approve, I'm sorry, to continue items 23 through 28, and to approve the withdrawal of 29 and 30, and also to continue item number 16. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued or withdrawn as stated. So then we have a consent docket, and these are items that are fairly routine in nature. They're not quite, it's not quite an administrative approval. We're definitely going to vote on them, but we vote on them in a block rather than individually. Could you read those for us?
Yes, the first one is an application to close a portion of right-of-way. That's item number one, located at west of, let's see, this says North Blackwelder Avenue. And then item number two is an application to close the utility easement in lots one and four of Spring Creek Office Park. Three is an application to rezone 1,000, or 10,020 West Wilshire Boulevard. Number four is an application to rezone 2105 Southwest 55th Street. Number five, application to rezone 220 Northwest 95th Street. And number six, preliminary plat of Ann Arbor Village, north of 23rd Street and west of North Ann Arbor Avenue. And the last one, number seven, final plat of Skyline Trails Storage, located north of West Reno Avenue and east of Cemetery Road.
According to the staff report, item number one is, I require an application to close a portion of the right-of-way of North Blackwelder Avenue located at 1631 Northwest 21st Street. Is there anybody present today who wanted to be heard on any of those items? Not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of items one through seven.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve items one through seven. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are approved. Items requiring separate vote.
Item number eight is an application by Kim Ray for a revised specific plan located at 1803 East Britton Road.
Is our applicant present?
Good afternoon. My name's Austin Burton of CEC Corporation, representing Kim Ray. Thomas Hill, CEO and President of Kim Ray's here, as well as Reese Associates. So this is a revision, as you see in your packets. We're changing the design slightly to remove portions of the office portion of the building, as well as the daycare for a future phase. Some other minor changes, the parking lot reduced in size for the reduction in building square footage. And then we've removed a separate truck road. Worked through all those comments with, with staff. The only comment they had was in regards to the building-mounted sign. So that's the main thing I want to talk with you all about today. We talked about it when we were before you in April, and so that building-mounted sign is one aspect of the project that hasn't changed, and Kim Ray feels very strongly about it. So what we've done is working with staff, using your packets, demonstration that it is in fact a custom logo and not letters. So the drawing there is from 1948, that was, was done by Mr. Hill, Thomas's grandfather, I believe, and those are not letters you can find in Microsoft Word to type up. So it's also provided photos showing that logo's been used back as early as the late 40s. So working with staff, they've stated that if Planning Commission approves, they'd be willing to administratively amend. The PUD, the PUD has restrictions on letter height of 48 inches for any building-mounted signs, but it doesn't speak to logos. And also, we would still meet the restrictions in the base zoning district of I-2 for building-mounted sign, total sign dimensions, but we would far exceed the letter requirements, so we feel, like I said, that it's a logo and not letters. So we're here to answer any questions on the, any specific plan revisions that we've made, but also wanted to get Planning Commission approval for the staff to administratively amend, the PUD to allow the logo on the building.
Okay. I have a few questions about this. First of all, I'm a little confused about what difference it makes, whether it's a logo or letters. If there's a size requirement, why wouldn't that apply? JJ?
They meet the size requirement for the sign. It's just the fact that the sign contains letters. There was a specific requirement in the PUD that the letters, any letters on the sign not exceed a certain height. But if this sign were a vowel, or whatever it is they make, you know, some large picture, it would, it would be permitted at this size.
But we knew that when we approved the PUD, right? I mean, okay. So then the next question I have, don't go anywhere, is if we're taking action today, one way or the other about this, how is that directing staff to administratively amend?
Because you saw it once and turned it down, we felt we weren't, we didn't want to just administratively amend the PUD. If you feel comfortable that they've come back with more justification, that this is a logo, then we would specifically exempt logos from the lettering height requirement, but leaving it up to you.
One more question. Was phasing not always something that was permitted by the PUD? I mean, there's nothing about the adoption of the PUD that requires them to build the entire thing tomorrow, is there?
No. But they, they came in and they showed you a specific plan that was going to be significantly different than what they were going to take to plan review to get permits on. So we felt it best they come back and amend that to match what they're going to get permitted.
Okay. So then to you, I guess one of my questions, maybe to you, is, you know, what's happened since April that these changes have been necessitated?
I could let Thomas speak to it, but I'll give a shot at it and let him correct me if I'm wrong, but market conditions have restrained, restricted the budget that they had allocated to construct the full facility. So they do still plan to have the full build-out for what you saw in April, where they want to go ahead and, and build the primary function, which is the warehouse, and then they'll come back in later and add the two-story office wing some number of years down the road.
There's some discussion in the staff report about outdoor storage. Where is that going to go?
The only outdoor material storage will be on the north side of the building, which would be facing currently undeveloped property, and in the event that that property is ever zoned or developed residentially, the owner would build a, a screen wall on the north property line. Right now, it's a radio tower and forest to the north.
So just anywhere along the north side of the building?
It's a loading dock for all their outbound shipping, so any stored materials that were, were there along that north face. Primarily, the northeast corner of the building, facing north, will have some chip processing, some storage bins with metal millings that will be there. It's not very much for the size of facility that it is. All our operations will be inside the walls of the building.
Commissioners?
So let's go back to this logo sign discussion. If I understand JJ correctly, what he's saying is that if this were a, that it meets the requirements of the sign, that it's within the confines of this, what was allowed for the signage. It's that because there is a specific requirement in the PUD about lettering height, that's where the issue is created. So if, if this sign were, let's talk about some other letters that are logos, Subway, Budweiser, Coca-Cola, would these all be letters too that would have the same problem? But, but the logo size, the signage size is, is compliant. So I don't think I was here yet when this PUD was done. I saw the specific plan, I remember that. It's like I'm in a twilight zone right now, because I remember having this discussion, but I don't remember, was there a reason, and I've never seen this done any, any other, in any other PUD, is there a reason in this instance where the lettering and the signage were negotiated in this PUD differently? Is there some rationale for this, or is it, is it honestly an oversight?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it was negotiated with neighbors at the time when the first PUD came through, when the building was out on the corner of the property.
The building was originally in the southeast corner of the property, right at Britton and Eastern. All the residences are on the east side of Eastern, the south side of Britton. The new plan, the building, is 1,200 feet from any of those roads, so 1,200 feet plus from any residences. So I didn't write the original PUD either. That's the best that we can gather from talking with Kim Ray. It was done 2014, so it has been a while. But I believe that's part of the reason that was negotiated in. But to your point, Budweiser, Coca-Cola, this is a trademarked logo, custom-designed letters, so in our opinion, and Kim Ray's opinion, it should be considered the same as.
I get it. I get, and I understand your position. So the other thing that I agree with the chairwoman on is I'm a little confused about why we're within the specific plan process, we're trying to approve you to administratively amend. This is a new, this is a new nuance for me. Wouldn't it just be that they could go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance, which the Board of Adjustment wouldn't like, or they could go, basically have to go back through the zoning process? Do we even have the authority, Ms. Randall, to approve the Planning Department to administratively amend a specific plan? I would say no, but I of course will defer to your counsel.
I'm not sure I've looked at that issue. I'd probably have to research that. I can't tell you directly off my, top of my head.
I'm not trying to be difficult. Here's what I don't want to happen. So let's say that we did this, and we can't do it, and then one of the neighbors that was here, however many years ago, figures out that we did it when you put that sign on the building, and they get irritated, and they come back. We're not going to be able to defend the action. And I've put the city in a position by voting for it that I can't support. Having said that, I guess I'll say this to you, I don't see the difference. I don't have a problem. If it, if it's within the confines of what's allowed on the sign, we're haggling over, in my mind, what is a matter of semantics. So I don't have a problem with it, but I'm concerned about the way we're going about this process. And that's why I'm a little, I can't, I'm not sure I can support it for that reason alone. And I hate to do, I hate to do that to you as an applicant, because I think you need clear direction, and you haven't gotten it, but I don't think we can do that unless she tells me we can. I certainly don't feel comfortable voting for it, but I can't speak for these folks.
I think, the last thing I would say, if I could, and working with JJ has been fantastic to work with, the, the whole reason the letter height got brought up is it was a staff comment on our initial application, and we, we feel that as, as a logo, it shouldn't be, if it considered in a, in the letter height language in the PUD. But again, that's a call that we're asking you all to make today, so.
How far off the road is this sign? I don't, ours aren't good, I can't see it on here.
So it's at the southeast corner of the building, as shown in the packet. It's about 1,200 feet, pretty far distance away from, from Britton, and about 1,500 feet from Eastern, so the letter height, Jason, is it 12, 12 feet, the letter, the letters, if, the logo height, excuse me? The logo height is about 12 feet, so for perspective, it'd be very small.
Just to be clear, we're not talking about the signs that are, the monument signs that are at the street. We're only talking about the sign that's on the building.
Yes, the monument signs comply with the PUD.
If I may make sure I understand it, not some code that says what size it can or can't be, it's the negotiated PUD. If that's correct, then I guess you would have the option, maybe you don't want to do it though, of a new PUD, or revising the PUD, but for some reason, we're not doing that. We're just hoping to ignore the way the PUD was negotiated. Okay? There's not some reason you can't get a new PUD, or, I mean?
We could go back through the PUD revision process at this point. This is the only holdup, and we felt that we wanted to bring it before you all to help us get over this last hurdle, but for, instead of opening the can of worms again, we'd go back through the PUD that otherwise was, allows for this building.
And I, and I respect that, but I want, I want to make one point, and this is very important to me, because we have other issues in this front, too. Here's the problem. Nobody that was here when you did your zoning application that showed up, and again, I wasn't, I didn't sit in this chair then, but there were public people that appeared here and opposed it for that reason. Those people were not noticed when this specific plan came through. That's why I don't, I can't, can't go there. It's just not the right process, and I'm, I mean it. I, I don't like the way that it has to be handled, because I feel like it is creating quite a burden, and I'm, and I do think that it's, from my perspective only, a little silly, but I, the process has to work, and it has to be fair, and nobody knew this was coming. They're not going to know until you put the sign up. So that's where I am. Unless municipal councillor tells me differently, I just, I gotta be done right.
Well, I would say a couple of things about that. What my staff report says is that Kim Ray requests that the Planning Commission direct staff to administratively amend the PUD to exempt logos from the letter height restriction. I'm not willing to do that. Logos are logos, letters are letters. I don't, I don't see that as a, a point of demarcation here, so.
Yeah, and I think, now that I'm thinking about it more, I'm thinking that because that was a specifically negotiated item in the PUD itself, that the only way to change that, I don't, I don't have the PUD in front of me, but normally, the only way to change that is if you go back through and get an amendment, if it doesn't meet the administrative amendment requirements, for staff to do it.
So they would be entitled to an administrative amendment to the PUD, would they? On the letter size, even within the, within the 20% range? But this is just exceeds that, is that it?
Yes, 20%, increase.
I, I think, yeah. I don't have quite the same feel for the process part of it that you have, but the fact that this is something that was specifically negotiated at the time, that it was a point upon which, you know, the neighbors felt strongly enough to engage in the process and negotiate a particular outcome, and the fact that they are not now part of this process, that's problematic for me, so.
On this, the, getting an approval on this sign today isn't going to stop you guys, right, from, from moving forward with development. If you have to go back through the process and rezone, there's no reason to not, right, rule on the rest of this today? Unless you guys, I mean, can we not, can we not say, let's, let's strike the, the sign, because it seems like that's the direction we're going? Strike that portion, get you guys approved on the, on the changes elsewise, so that it doesn't stop the whole project?
It says amendments to the specific plan meet the technical requirements of the PUD 1530 with the exception of the sign regulation. So again, I would think, Susan, we could approve, we could, we could make a motion to approve this specific plan, subject to the compliance with signage, right, not exempting them from that, and then at that point, they could begin the process of going through that rezone. And I, I know that, I know that stinks, but that, that's how it works. I don't know what, I don't know what else to do.
So we'll have to run our, we have to know our lanes and run in it, so.
At least it's only the sign.
That's right.
And do everything else?
The one process comment that I would make, I guess, is that it, it does seem to me to be inordinately burdensome, that we do not have any way to amend PUDs or SPODs other than to basically start over. I mean, it's problematic, because when people have single issues or items that need to be addressed, I mean, it's, it's not an inconsiderable process. And for myself, when people come to us to change one part of a PUD, as far as I'm concerned, it's all on the table. So it's, it's kind of a can of worms. I think we ought to be looking hard at having some kind of narrow administrative process that would speak to the issue that concerns you, which is notice. And give, give people the opportunity to participate in the process without necessarily opening up the entire PUD or SPOD to reconsideration or renegotiation, so.
I don't disagree. There, there is a, an element of relief. It doesn't always work, but they, the, the variance can be sought at the Board of Adjustment. And, and, but again, purely from, from our standpoint, I feel like we have an obligation to protect the city here. There was no notice, and, and we would be doing something that really can't be done. And I think, I don't want to point fingers, but there's some people sitting out here that we see every week, right, that would just love for there to be a way that they could, through a specific plan, administratively amend PUDs that were specifically negotiated without notice to neighbors. And I don't think that that's a good, I don't think there's a good precedent to set.
I agree with that.
And I will say, as far as the Board of Adjustment, too, I think we have been advising them that they cannot grant a variance to something specifically negotiated in a PUD.
And, and I agree with that, so. I mean, I, I think there needs to be some sort of, of an amendment process in place. So, anybody else have anything they want to add? Is anybody here who wants to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
It's not my word, but he's not here, so I'll make it anyway. I'll make a motion to approve the specific plan, subject to the requirements, including signage at this point.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the specific plan, item number eight, subject to compliance with the PUD's signage requirements. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item number nine is an application to rezone now 9,001 South Fairview Drive from R4 to C1.
Is our applicant present? Would you come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Brady Odom, and the address is 9001 South Fairview.
And what is it that you're asking for from us today?
Yeah, I'm asking to rezone that present property I have to C1 from an R4.
Commissioners? I, I do have someone signed up to speak. Do we have any questions of Mr. Odom?
You doing this just to put it up for sale?
Yes. Yeah, I have it in a contract, and then part of the agreement is to change the zoning to the C1.
Any idea what their plans are?
Well, I got my real estate guy here, he knows a little bit more, but he's, it's going to be office buildings or a medical facility of some kind be put there, some kind of a very nice commercial site, as opposed to what the R4 would allow in the family dwelling, you know, apartment houses, whatever. I thought it'd be more suitable for the commercial aspect of it, more appealing to that site.
Anyone else? Give us just a minute, if you would. I have, would it be Dan Novacek? Signed up to speak. Would you come forward, please, sir? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Novacek.
Well, I wasn't even close, was I? What do you want us to know about this?
Just talk to some of the neighbors in the neighborhood, just to make sure that it's going to be good for the neighborhood there on the corner, and just make sure that there's, there's a lot of traffic that comes through there, and just want to try to keep the, the property value of that area up, and just make sure that what's going to be going into there is not going to be something that's going to, you know, bring in people, maybe I don't, we don't want to have the extra traffic in there, or like a Dollar General, or, you know, something that we would be happy with to have in there, either just to leave it residential, or to have a, be a, a good commercial, what they, they have said that the buyer is going to make it into, you know. So I have no idea what the buyer, how much flexibility that gives them, if they can just put in whatever they want, you know? It'd be nice to know kind of what's going to be put in, you know, so.
So this is a straight zoning request. The designation that they're seeking is C1. It's a relatively lower density or intensity commercial use, but it has a, a list of, of uses that could be made of the property. I wonder.
You want me to read some of them?
There you go.
Okay. So for C1, permitted uses, administrative and professional offices, adult daycare facility, alcohol beverage retail sales, animal sales and services grooming, animal sales and services kennel, kennel and veterinary restricted. You have business support services, childcare centers. You also have convenience sales and personal services. You have eating establishments, sit-down, eating establishments, well, all the ABC stuff's already gone, so. Food and beverage retail sales, greenhouse, hoop house. If you know what that is, I'll give you 50 bucks.
You said, I'm sorry, Scott, what was it?
Hoop house.
Sorry, what?
Hiccup. H-I-O-P, hoop.
No idea what that is.
Library services, I'm going to lean on JJ on that one. Library services and community centers. Retail sales, to answer your real question, you said the Dollar General, that's permitted. Retail sales, to answer your real question, you said the Dollar General, that's permitted. Low-impact institutional, medical services, medical services restricted, personal services restricted, repair services, consumer.
So, it would permit, for instance, gasoline sales, small gasoline sales, two service islands with three pumps per island, but partly because of the size of the property itself. I mean, it's not going to be an on-cue, you know. It's not that kind of retail or commercial use. But it's a fairly wide list. We don't have the ability with straight zoning to eliminate any of those uses or more narrowly tailor what it will be.
So, you're not able to?
To be any of those things.
Oh, so you're not able to restrict it, or say, you know, can't be alcohol, can't be retail?
No, not with a straight zoning request.
Okay. Because, I mean, you know, a lot of us live in the neighborhood, and we prefer not to have a Dollar General there, or, you know, an alcohol. I'd prefer not to have an alcohol establishment there.
So, very often, at times like this, we suggest to an applicant that they take some time and go meet with the neighbors, talk to them about what it is they would like to see there or not see there. But the ability to tailor the zoning really would require that this process be interrupted and that they file an SPD, small planned unit development. Isn't the S for small?
Simple.
Simple planned unit development. So, C1 is a fairly low-intensity commercial use. I don't want to speak on behalf of the commission, but.
I'm not, it's not that I'm not respectful of your concern. I would certainly support this rezoning application, and I'll tell you why. The site affronts Southwest 89th, which is a primary arterial street. It's designed to carry the commercial traffic. Your neighborhood is divided by what is essentially a water tower, what looks like a service drive to the water tower. And what is the, what, I can't tell what this property exactly is to the south of the site that affronts Fairview Drive. It does not appear to be a home. And then you have a church across the street, which, not to go down this rabbit hole, but is going to further limit what uses could be put in there because of the proximity of that church. So, I don't see that you have a lot of, that it's going to, it would adversely affect it. The reason that someone would come in with an SPD, in my opinion, is if there were mitigating factors here that we would want to think about because it was adjoining or abutting the residential use, and, you know. But this is, as you said, a very small piece. It seems perfectly appropriate for a straight zoning application, to me. And I support the application because I think it's common sense. It looks to me, like from the zoning map, just so you understand, that at one point, there's probably a larger area that had zoned for R4, but it didn't develop that way. And so, this is like a leftover piece that's relatively small. It doesn't make a lot of sense to leave it as R4, in my view. That's my view.
I'd second his comments.
Commissioner Kinkle, did you want to add any comments?
I agree, it's a small enough lot, they're not going to be able to do anything. High-traffic volume, it's, what, 120 by 120, basically? So, I agree with Commissioner Cravens, this.
So, is there, is there any way that we can keep from an alcohol establishment being?
I think that church will take care of that.
Yeah, you can't put an alcohol establishment within so many feet of a church or a school.
Okay, so that one's solved.
You're across the street from an elementary school and right in between two churches, so.
So, that's not allowed?
No, I would not think it would be allowed, so.
Or a dispensary, either.
For a dispensary, either?
By the school.
Okay. So, those are, those are two on the top of the list, I think, that some of the neighbors were concerned about, was alcohol and dispensary.
It's not big enough for a real-life retail location by the time you figure in the right-of-way around it, the access points. A small office with, you know, parking for 10 is probably what they're going to be able to squeeze in there, so. Well, is there anybody else to speak?
No, I'm sorry.
I will make a motion to approve, I mean, have we answered your question?
Those are two, those are two on the top of my list for concerns for.
If it were someplace else in another part of the world without churches and schools around it, then they could do what they wanted to, but I don't think you're concerned, I mean, you don't have a concern here with alcohol, dispensary, so.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, that's all I, that's all I got, I guess. Yeah.
So, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Item 10 is an application to rezone 1516 North MacArthur Boulevard from R1 to SPD 1161.
Randy Hill, 510 Callcor Drive. Edie Hill representing the applicants, Don and Trent Hickey.
And what is it that they're wanting to do with this property?
Property's presently vacant, although it previously had a bar on it. The applicant is intending to build a car dealership similar to the one they have to the north. Trent Hickey will operate this. And we agree with the summary of technical evaluations.
So, is this, is this sort of an expansion of the use to the north?
Yes.
The reason I ask is because I, it seems to me that the request you have for signage is a little oversized. In fact, I'm not sure why you need another sign, period, given that you're really just expanding the use to the north.
It could be a separate dealership, that's why.
25 feet and 100 square feet in size seems oversized to me. And I would like to see, given that you're surrounded by residential uses, I would like to see the elimination of outdoor speakers for the site.
Okay.
Those can be incredibly annoying for residential properties nearby. I also have a question for you about, there's a statement in the staff report that the SPD proposes that the drives will be narrowed and reduced to one.
Yes.
The subject site has two existing curb cuts that take up the majority of the street range. How will you accomplish that?
We'll close the drive to the north. It's the larger opening along MacArthur. We'll pour a curb there and put landscaping in.
Okay.
We had actually planned on using it, but one of the staff comments was suggesting closing that, and so we've agreed to do that.
Maybe that should be added, then, as a TE, that you'll pour a curb, I mean. Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Do we have any questions of our applicant, comments, questions?
Mr. Hill, you've indicated that this will be limited to sales and light automobile repairs. How would you define light automobile repairs?
Well, it's well-defined in the code, but it's just for automobiles. We'd have a building planned at the back where we'd be able to work on cars as needed and that sort of thing.
A couple of times I've driven by, it looks like you're already doing some automobile repairs at the lot to the north. You know, my concern would be that you don't pull a transmission and let it sit there for two, three, four days or five. I did have some concerns from the adjacent neighbors to the east about automobile repairs already going on. So, I would just caution you that those automobile repairs are limited to quick fixes and not going on for several days. And also, to be aware of the technical evaluations that you adhere to those.
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, you're going to need to give that additional 17-foot right-of-way that you are in compliance with those technical evaluations.
We do.
Were you wanting to add a technical evaluation to limit the repairs to light repairs, is this defined by the code?
Yes, please.
Okay. It is. Light equipment, okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioners?
I feel like while looking at something, I missed a comment on the curb cuts. Did you address that, Janice?
Yes, I had asked him how they were going to narrow the curb cuts, and they said they were going to pour a curb. So, I think that should be added as a, as a technical evaluation.
Yeah, these curb cuts look massive. Surely, even for a use like this, we can narrow those down to a single entrance?
Yes, we've agreed to do that.
Okay.
And we're going to, we'll pour a curb and do landscaping where the larger entrance to the north was. When there was a bar, it had those two entrances there.
Cool.
Anybody else? Now, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve this SPD 1161.
One second.
Subject to the addition of a TE requiring them to pour a curb to limit the curb cuts to a single curb cut.
Second.
Any other TEs? I think we decided that the light repairs are covered by the SPD itself, so. Pass your votes, please. I do have a motion, a second, didn't I? Yes. It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Subject to the amendments.
Item 11 is an application to rezone 526 Southeast 12th Street from R1 to SPD 1159.
Is our applicant present?
Good afternoon, Alan Kirkpatrick, KFC Engineering, on behalf of the, of bridging the gap.
Tell us what it is that you're doing here, please.
Okay. The bridging the gap is, operates an after-school care for Schuyler Elementary, which is in close proximity to the site, approximately a block and a half. The, they would, as part of their mission, they want to help underprivileged families begin to own homes, stabilize, advance. Currently, or there were three houses in this area, on this section, or portion of the block. And currently, the primary, primarily what we'd like to do is we'd like to change the minimum lot size, and then also some setbacks that are required in R1. And we'd like, and we'd also like to have access to the alleyway.
Alan? How are you?
Asa, good, how are you?
Good. Do you know what a hoop house is?
I think I do.
You guys, you guys have specified it, so I thought I would ask.
Sorry?
What is it?
A house made of hoops.
There you go, all right, cool.
Okay, 50 bucks?
No, I legitimately, I'm still curious what a hoop house is.
It is an unheated structure whose roof and sides are made largely of transparent or translucent material, typically other than glass, for the purpose of cultivating agricultural products and other plants for personal or commercial use. This use unit shall be subject to use regulations set forth in another portion of the.
It's like a miniature greenhouse.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, okay.
So, I noticed that you have included in your list of permitted uses, animal raising, personal?
We'll strike that.
Okay.
I think that's been recommended, and we're fine with that.
Okay. And I wanted to make, just draw your attention to the comment of the fire department that they have no objection provided no parking will be allowed in the alley. How do you feel about that?
That's fine. And, I mean, I completely understand it.
Okay.
Wait, does that mean they won't park in the alley? Or they won't have parking off the alley?
It means they won't park in the alley.
Well, I mean, they're not going to park literally blocking the alley versus have a driveway that comes off of the alley.
I think they don't want to park in the alley.
Right. Never mind, okay. Just one clarification.
I have one question. So, at the scenic river overlay designed portion of the RDC, they said suggestions were made to add a sidewalk to the alley and narrow driveways, but were not included in the motion to recommend approval of the application to planning commission. I mean, I noticed there's a sidewalk, what appears to be there. Is that something that we need to address here to try to memorialize what they wanted for the overlay? Or did that ultimately get included in this application?
The timing was such that I don't think we could get it in, but we'll do it.
So, we could make that a TE?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I talked to them, they're fine with that, yeah.
All right. I got one other question. I can't believe I'm the one asking this. Why, why does the, there's one of the structures affronts Derland Avenue instead of creating a uniform front on Southeast 12th? Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, that's, that's subject to change. Initially, that was going to be maybe a higher-volume house, so a bigger family. And the, one, part of the, part of the allure of this, part of the, if you will, the theme is that the houses kind of face each other, if you'll notice. Porches kind of face each other. It's generated to create community. And this, this particular home, we didn't feel like that was totally necessary. It more faces more Southeast 12th, lots of frontage on Southeast 12th. Since, since that development, I think the bridging the gap is more keen to having it more like the rest of the homes, so.
I'll just.
I don't think that helps. It's, it's kind of in, it's a fluid design.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anybody present today who wanted to be heard?
I'm happy to make a motion. If not, I will say first that I think all the civil engineers in here are going to get scared to see structural engineers.
Nothing to be scared about.
But I make a motion to recommend approval.
With the addition of a TE addressing the sidewalk?
Yeah, well, there's two TEs that they were in agreement with. Did we need to add the TE from fire? Is that necessary to add that to here, or is that just a simple code issue? You can't park in an alley.
I think that's just a code issue. You can't park in alleys. Not supposed to, you can get, you know, taken in toad.
I think you better make that a TE. I don't think these are public alleys.
That's what I wondered, if it's a private, so, okay. So, then, the third TE then would be to limit parking in the private alley, and then the fourth TE would be to incorporate the recommendations of the scenic river overlay.
I will take that as Scott's motion, and I will second it.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the SPD 1159 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations one and two, adding technical evaluation number three, which is to incorporate the Riverfront Design Committee's recommendation. which is to incorporate the riverfront design committee's recommendations to add a sidewalk to the alley and to narrow the driveways on the alley, and to technical evaluation number four, which will prevent or eliminate parking in the private alley as shown on the site plan.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 11, subject to the four technical evaluations as recited. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 12 is an application to rezone 6401 North Sooner Road from AA to C3.
Is our applicant present?
Hello, I'm Kerry Pittman, 6401 North Sooner Road, requesting rezoning from agriculture to C3 for my property.
So what has changed since we saw you last?
When we came last, there was an issue about the upland forest in the area of the actual rezoning that we had. We had it at 4.9 acres originally. Upon the report and doing some conversation with the staff and things of that nature as well, I went back, got with my land surveyor, we reduced the acreage to 2.4 acres, which dropped the upland forest from 70% down to around 20% to 25%, which also fit in, as it seems, with the plan, okay, see, provisions and things of that nature. So that was the main thing we had on the initial one, so we just tried to make some changes to fit appropriately.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
There's no discussion, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the application.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 12. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 13 is a preliminary plat of Highland Ranch located south of West Britton Road and east of North Mustang Road.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a, there's a preliminary plat that has been before you prior to this and was approved. This is at the southeast corner of Mustang and Britton. We exceeded, in the change of the layout, we exceeded the 20%, or the increase that is allotted to be administratively approved by the preliminary plat, so we're back before you. We agree with the TEs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
My staff report variously indicates that you'll be providing 10.4 acres and/or 9.4 acres of open space common area.
Well, there's two large common areas that have existing ponds within them, kind of centrally located off of Britton Road, so.
I mean, I-
That's the common area, and there will be amenities inside of those as well.
You have any idea which it is, the 10.4 or 9.4 too?
You know, honestly, I saw those two comments in there, and I struck the second one, so I'm not positive.
Okay. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Commissioners, do you have comments?
JJ says it's 9.4.
Thank you.
If there's no discussion, I'll make another motion.
Second.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve preliminary plat, noting that it conforms to subdivision regulations and the R1 zoning district requirements. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 14 is an application by Edmund Public Schools to rezon 2301 Northwest 145th Street.
Is our applicant present?
Yes ma'am. Mark Ferris, 2933 South Bryant, representing Edmund Public Schools. The item before you is a revisit to a previous request for rezoning, and this is as a PUD. As far as the technical evaluations, we agree with TE number two but do not agree with TE number one. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Basically, the reason why we do not agree with TE number one deals with the drainage. Staff comments through the report talk about this being a riparian or a natural channel. That area has not been natural since Quail Springs Mall was constructed in the 70s and 80s. Basically, everything south of W.P. Atkinson has been disturbed, and for the most part, that natural channel was no longer natural when 145th was constructed. It is nothing more than a ditch for the vast majority of this property. So to try and claim a natural channel doesn't seem appropriate. Also, TE one talks about making it a recreational area. I don't think it's appropriate to have recreational areas next to a creek or channel at an elementary school. I'm not sure the parents would go for that. So that's why we don't agree with TE number one. TE number two is no issue. Be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Commissioners?
Okay, I'll jump in. I have no issue with the application. As it turns out, I'm not a riparian natural channel expert, so I would need staff to help me if we're going to try to change the language of that or eliminate it altogether if they include it for a reason, so can someone give me the other side of that reason the staff comment was included? Jeff?
The staff, the channel, I mean, it's pretty typical that we'll include a recommendation like that just 100 feet from the stream channel. Now, I guess it's debatable. Apparently, it's been disturbed, so, you know, we may not necessarily go out there and test and see. We don't have data on the functionality or the degree of disturbance on any given channel. What we see is that it exists and may be worthy of protecting and providing some open space at the same time. So it was really just mostly to protect the channel and also to provide some open space.
Maybe the question really ought to be, what are you going to do to protect the channel from the children, or the children from the channel? If it's there and it exists, and it's an open ditch, as you refer to it, or stream as staff report refers to it, how will you keep the kids out of it?
Well, I would maybe contest that and say that, how do we keep the kids out of the streets that surround all four sides of the school?
Can we talk about the channel first?
Yeah, I just think, I don't see the difference. Either you're fencing out everything, or you're fencing it in.
Well, I think the difference is, I'll speak not intentionally for the applicant, but the 100-foot thing is argued almost every time somebody comes in here, and I think we've agreed that the problem is, is that it's created an arbitrary tool, that it's, in this instance, what is designed to protect these channels, and in this case, it's no longer. And I take your word on that. I've driven it, I don't recall a channel. But my point is, is it becomes arbitrary, and it becomes hard to enforce, because in this instance, if you look at the drawing provided by the staff report, this alleged channel doesn't run through the center of the property, but it runs through an encumbering portion of the property, so to require a 100-foot setback is, you know, it's an issue. That's what I was trying to get to, is in the past, one of the things we've done is we've reduced that down, where we've tried to say we're going to protect it, to sort of meet a middle ground there between this 100-foot number that shows up in staff reports and what the conditions on the ground require. So if there's something there that we can do, I want to uphold that, because I want to try to uphold the comp plan wherever possible. If not, I'm going to have to go with the applicant who's got the best information at the moment and agree to support removing the TE, so.
Just to point out, there is a drainage structure from that channel underneath the road that's very recent, so it does carry enough water that there was a need to put in a drainage structure. So, I mean, it still functions, it still does channel water. I just, I don't know to what degree, what depth, what frequency. But there is a substantial drainage structure underneath the street.
That doesn't help me make a decision, or at least give my opinion on what decision we should make. How far back would you need, how close would you need to be?
Well, city code requires us to maintain the natural drainage or drainage. Anything below the 100-year storm has to be in a drainage easement, according to city code, so that's not really the issue. I think the language for TE number one is, it's not a measurable thing. So who is to determine low-impact development, recreational, or scenic amenity? Is that staff? Is that you? So, you know, one TE can't be over eight foot high in a sign. I'm an engineer, I can go out and measure that all day long, and I know where I'm supposed to be. But a subjective thing is not measurable.
Yeah, we agree that we have a standard problem, but there's the intent of what it's trying to do, and there's the reality of what it can do, and that's what we're trying to figure out. I have an idea, because one of the things we talked about when you were here last time on the street rezoning application was that, part of the reason for coming back, which was not included in your application, was the need for a specific plan. We talked about that when you were here last time.
Yes.
And I'm going to kindly request my other commissioner support me in requiring that as a TE, which should read this way. TE number three, specific plan shall be required, providing the planning commission the explicit right to review and amend the site circulation patterns and traffic mitigation measures, so we can see what you're going to do there to get people in and off this street, which has already got a lot of traffic problems. I think we can just add to that, that we can review as a part of the specific plan, what you're doing to control the drainage in the channel at that point, and give you a chance to survey it, figure out where you're going to build, how far you need to be, how you can preserve the drainage, all that stuff. Does that strike you as being feasible?
I think if we-
Getting a nod from JJ.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if we were to add that TE for a specific plan, or site plan approval, as I understand it, then that would address TE one. So I would suggest we remove TE number one completely.
That's what I'm saying. I remove it in favor of us having the explicit right to review it when you come back for the specific plan, to ensure that we protected that channel. As our planning director said, recent public dollars went out to improve the infrastructure there. There's clearly water that comes through it in a rain. I don't know where it comes from. Remember, I'm not the riparian expert, so I just have to take their word for it, right?
Let me ask you a question. Are you wanting to add the specific plan because of TE one, or is that a discussion?
No, we talked about the specific plan when you were here last time.
Yes.
Which was the need to ensure that that site, that we have the ability to review your traffic circulation patterns and how traffic's going to come in and off the street, because we've got infrastructure problems there that I'm particularly sensitive to, and we keep seeing applications come up. So I've messed up a couple of them, I'm not going to do it on this one either.
So the site plan or the master plan that was included as part of the PUD?
It's a site plan, it's not a specific plan.
Okay.
It's great that you're telling us that's what you intend to do. I would like to see a specific plan which would lay that out and give us a chance at that time to review that and say, you're not allowing for the queuing of enough cars, right? Or you haven't moved this far enough from the street. That's what I'm concerned about.
I can agree to that.
I would also add to that respectfully, that at the specific plan stage, I feel like a lot of times we'll see these initial plans, and this is exactly what we will get on the specific plan, with just a little more detail. I would ask that you be sensitive to the thoughts and comments here today, and the obvious questions may be a little bit leaning towards TE one, which will be struck, and think creatively about how we might have an easier discussion when you guys come back with this specific one.
Commissioners, do I have any other comments? Is there anybody else here today who wanted to be heard on this item? I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
I just want, I'm happy to make the motion if we're ready to proceed, if everybody's comfortable, but I want to make sure that staff's comfortable with that language that I proposed for TE three. Jeff and JJ and Nod would be, I mean, are you guys comfortable with that language?
If you could restate it, that would be great. It sounded-
Okay, well, I'll read it as a motion, but I'll read it to you first. So, specific plan shall be required, providing the planning commission the explicit right to review and amend the site circulation patterns, traffic mitigation measures, and I'll just add to it, and stormwater drainage and detention. How should I say that? Impact? What would it, is that, ooh, that was like a half scowl. Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to recommend approval of PUD 1738, subject to the deletion of TE one, accepting TE two, and adding TE three, which shall state, specific plan shall be required, providing the planning commission the explicit right to review and amend the site circulation patterns, traffic mitigation measures, and stormwater drainage and detention plan.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 14, subject to the technical evaluations as stated. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you. Since I'm assuming that you're leaving, can I just say, I intend at the end of the meeting today to have a discussion about, initiating a discussion for us, and hopefully other people who are smarter and better than me, about the schools and our communication with you all as it relates to what's going on. I know this has been burdensome, and I hate that you had to come back on two different occasions to do this. We need a better dialogue, we being the city of Oklahoma City, with our surrounding school district neighbors, Piedmont, Deer Creek, Mustang, Yukon, Edmund, all of these, about what our growth looks like, where things are being zoned, how much development is coming. I feel like we're not doing a good job of communicating with one another, so I just wanted you to know that that's something that I appreciate, if you'd let your client know, that I'll talk about long after you're not on a wood bench.
Okay.
Item 15 is an application to rezon 3748 North Lincoln Boulevard from C3 to PUD 1740.
Before we move on, can I just say, to Commissioner Heisman, I think most elementary schools have fences around them to keep the kids out of the street, so I wasn't necessarily suggesting that you put a fence around the ditch, as it were, but I think they're pretty good at keeping the kids out of the street.
Well, that was my point. I didn't assume that they would build next to, you know, a drainage ditch and not have a plant. I wouldn't try to be-
So my question was just what that plan was.
Yeah, I was just saying, I didn't think it was an issue. It was my point, anyway.
I wanted to, sorry, mention, this application went to the Urban Design Commission yesterday, and the motion was made, approval was recommended with the following conditions, that the applicant revises the PUD language to eliminate for both tracks the allowance for any pylon signs, and secondly, revise the PUD exhibit to show the required protected internal pedestrian accessways and to indicate paths of travel between all building entrances on the entire site.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you is a PUD that provides for a wonderful opportunity for the northeast part of Oklahoma City. It's been discussed for quite some time, the lack of available fresh produce and fresh food, and what this PUD allows for is the opportunity to have a new full-service grocery store in the northeast part of the city at 36th and Lincoln. As the plan director stated, we did go to the Urban Design Commission. The reason being, if you'll recall, the Lincoln Boulevard overlay that came through, it put an overlay in place that included this piece of property that required design overview by the Urban Design Commission. And so the Urban Design Commission, in this instance, was sitting in an advisory capacity, providing a recommendation on the PUD to go to you, and then ultimately, you will provide a recommendation that will be forwarded on to City Council. So we talked a lot yesterday about why we are removing the elements of the overlay from this PUD. Ultimately, as the plan director said, they did vote to approve it. It was unanimous, and it did remove the overlay elements from this piece of property, and therefore, we would not go back to the UDC. So if you think about what the overlay requires, it's simply incompatible with the types of uses that you're going to see on this site. So in addition to the grocery store, it's also going to be the senior wellness facility. So let's think about the grocery store and the senior wellness facility. What you see in those types of uses is not two-story. One of the things that the overlay would require is a two-story structure, not just designed two-story, but an occupied two floors, and it would require it to be up against Lincoln. Lincoln. Grocery stores simply aren't up against the right-of-way. Grocery stores are typically set back, and you have the parking lot in front. In the UDC staff report, they made mention of the uptown grocery on May, and granted, that is an anomaly for this market. All of the other examples of grocery stores set up against the right-of-way were from places like Brooklyn and New York and major mega metropolitan areas where they aren't reliant on cars like our city simply is. Additionally, if you think about Lincoln, it is a six-lane, essentially state highway the way it operates, carries significant volumes of traffic. So when we think about an urban environment in which it would be very walkable, I would submit that simply 36th and Lincoln isn't that, doesn't fit that criteria. So what we've done here in the PUD is allowed for the grocery store and the senior wellness facility to be developed in a manner that is consistent with other grocery stores, and when you look at the other senior wellness centers that have gone in Oklahoma City, none of them are two-stories. Now, in the site plan you see before you, we have placed the wellness center up against Lincoln, but I will tell you, it is early in that process, and they are not in a position to design that yet. And so we do need some element of flexibility to be able to accomplish the very important goals of this PUD, again, the grocery store and the senior wellness facility. So again, the UDC staff report had a series of conditions the staff had. Ultimately, the two conditions that prevailed were the two that the planning director read, and so that was the recommendation from them to you. And so when we look at your staff report, there are eight technical evaluations, some of which we agree to, some of which we don't. So the ones that we can agree to are one, two, three, five, and six. So we do not agree. Would ask that you strike TEs four, seven, and eight. So there is no protest. I would admit that this is an application that has widespread public support, widespread support from this part of the community. There was an individual that was at the UDC yesterday that spoke. He's also here today, and I expect him to speak. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and we would ask for your approval. Yes, ma'am?
As I expressed to you earlier, the biggest issue that I have with the application as it stands now is the fact that there's no specific plan provision. It's not going to be subject to review later by the UDC, as you acknowledge, this is early in the process. I just have a real problem with the fact that we're approving sort of a carte blanche on a project of this size in this area.
I understand. There are certain timing elements that are requiring us to move at this speed. This is an item that has received double notice, and therefore will go to City Council fairly quickly. And although it's early in that we don't have full building designs, we don't have the luxury of having a lot of time. I can tell you, there are separate architects for both the homeland, as well as the senior wellness facility, that will be designing this project. The senior wellness facility is certainly a MAPS project, so it will have significant review and oversight as it moves through the process at the council level. So I understand your concerns, but, you know, and that was discussed at length yesterday at the Urban Design Commission. And what prevailed there was the overwhelming idea that this is too important of a project to potentially hamper its ability to move forward.
My response to that would be that the importance of the project is exactly what would, in my view, make it a better-than-average candidate for that kind of specific plan review.
And I understand. All I-- My response to that would be, if you think of the makeup of the Urban Design Commission, it is made up of design professionals, and they felt comfortable removing the design review criteria in their recommendation to you.
Well, the fact that they may not have seen this project as one that was particularly amenable to urban design standards is sort of separate from the point that I'm making, I think. Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant? I have a couple, but I'll wait on others.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak?
We do.
We do? Okay. I'm going to wait. I've got several though myself.
Are there-- Commissioners, are there issues within the PUD that, like the last item we heard, where there's considerations for the site that a specific plan makes sense for that concern you? Or is it just that generally you think the specific plan should be required?
Both.
Okay. Well, how would a general specific plan alter your timeline? Help me under-- I don't understand that.
Well, because we go to City Council, I think, in like three or four weeks.
Right, to get zoned.
To get zoned, and then they are moving forward with permitting and design and all of that. And so to have to come back and subject our building permits to review and approval by in another public hearing is simply a burden that we're not willing to agree to.
Okay. Okay.
Other commissioners? I do hope people signed up to speak. A person signed up to speak. Art Younger.
Do I just start talking?
Yes, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Arthur Younger, 2321 Northwest 161st Street in Edmund. I'm the Community Connections Manager for the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma, and I'm on behalf of the Regional Food Bank and our community partners, as well as community members. We just wanted to express our support for this project in regards to addressing food insecurity in the food desert in northeast Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Well, if that was the only person signed up, then I'm going to--
It is the only person. Mr. Warrior, did you want to speak to us today? I noted that you did appear at the Urban Design Commission yesterday.
You're taking up your usual chair back there. You might as well come talk to us.
Well, I didn't necessarily expect to talk there, but I am very supportive of this particular project they have with that. Name is Zenithon Warrior Jr., address is 5712 North Lottie Avenue. Have there-- It would be very, very nice-- I've just got a text from my wife. She needed me to stop by the grocery store and pick up a few things. So it would be very nice. I go up and down Lincoln Boulevard all the time, have for that. And about right now, in about an hour, there's going to be a sea of cars that are going down there, that area. So I really feel like that a full-service grocery store, that particular location, would be very successful, they have for that. I am aware of the Urban Design Overlay in Lincoln District. I did sit down on some of the discussion that was started back in July of 2017, when they started this individual overlay for a particular area for that. But keep it in mind, this is a-- Actually, I would call it a healthy campus in a particular area located with here. So far, as the location of the Health and Wellness Center, I have been involved over the-- Quite extensively since about a year, about location for the Health and Wellness Center for the northeast quadrant. As most-- Many of you may know, there were over 24, 25 possible sites for the Health and Wellness Center to be located within the northeast quadrant. It's gone through quite an extensive discussion about the various sites' locations. It has been narrowed down from 24 to about 12. At that particular time, I have been working with several people within a community at some various community centers, and we have met with them, with the operator of the Health and Wellness Center also, to discuss some good possible locations for a particular wellness center. We did narrow it down to four locations. This being one particular location that was selected for that, that we thought would be a very, very great location for the particular facility they have for that. The operator of the facility, this is one of their first choices of this particular location for that. There is a very big need for the-- For a-- Some healthy options for fruits and vegetables within the northeast quadrant. There is not any full-service grocery store is available at all in this particular location for that. I think that would be an excellent location for the grocery store. That being said, if you were to look at the urban designs and had the grocery store pushed up to the Lincoln Boulevard and had the entrance on the east side of Lindsay, that's not going to be very compatible to be able to actually get into the grocery store from that various two-lane street of Lindsay that's just east of this particular piece of property. Plus, the back of grocery store is not that pleasing look at from that Lincoln Boulevard side, have for that. So with the parking lot that's right up next to Lincoln Boulevard, it makes very easy, accessible access in and out of the individual store to make it very compatible for that particular area. But we're talking about having a healthy food, options of healthy fruits and vegetables, also a pharmacy that Homeland is going to be constructing, and then also you have the Health and Wellness Center campus going to be that particular piece of land, and then along with their corporate office with that particular area. The Homeland corporate office has been, as long as I can remember, in that near area over there, just west of the Wendy's, off of northeast 36th Street. They have been looking at this particular location for quite a bit of time for that. And I think with this mixed-use development that is up for proposal, this would make it very ideal and compatible for them to be able to use this particular plot of land, since they would need an entire nine to 10 acres of that particular area. So coupled with that, putting this all together, I think would be an excellent location. There has been support from various neighbors that I have talked with in the Capital View area, also Lincoln Terrace area. I've talked to a number of residents, and they're all very supportive of this location for the Homeland, for the Wellness Center, and this particular location for that. And I haven't had anyone that expressed any concerns about that particular location for it. I think it would be a very, very neat access for the location of Lincoln Boulevard, as it is part of our very important gateway, as it enters into our state Capitol complex area.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Warrior?
Sorry.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I have a few concerns. I agree with most everybody that I think it's an absolutely great location for the uses, but, you know, the main thing for me is, we just pushed through this Lincoln Boulevard overlay. This has got to be like the first project being developed under the overlay, and we're already up here, ready to throw it out the window. And I understand that, you know, there's concerns about how, well, it's going to make it tough, but it seems extremely hypocritical, especially on a city project, a MAPS project, that we're saying, "Well, it's good enough for everybody else, but not for us." And I also take issue with the idea that it's even a hindrance to a senior wellness center to be designed under this overlay. I think the overlay is perfect for a senior wellness center, and making sure that it adheres to the principles that we put into that overlay. Now, I understand the two-story is an issue when it's a senior wellness center. I'm fine-- You know, frankly, I'm not even a big fan of minimum story requirements anyway, and I'd be fine to put that out, but I think all of the other principles, unless you've got specific, you know, points, like, they all make sense to me. So I struggle with that.
Fair enough. So the requirement that you have the 60% transparency, that adds a bunch of costs, potentially adds some, you know, program problems, and again, we're just-- We're too early. And, I mean, I understand your point as to, you know, this just came through, but, you know, when you look at-- When you look at this area, this process moved fast. The process for the Lincoln Boulevard overlay, it moved fast. I don't know that there was that much stakeholder involvement, and this isn't the first, right? If you think back to the CLOPUD, we did a 50th and Lincoln, we stripped out most of the overlay from that as well. So really what it is, is every case that's come before you, when that was even being discussed, has removed those items.
I'm not quite sure I 100% follow on what you just said, but--
So at the time, they were tracking concurrently, the CLOPUD and this. And we specifically, in the PUD, removed elements that were being discussed at the time, for the very concerns and reasons that I'm now putting forward on this. Mark, will you hand me that exhibit? The other thing, I think, to consider is, when you look at the comprehensive plan, where this site falls, to the west of Lincoln is heavy industrial. And so perhaps this idea of it being an urban area, urban corridor of walkability, is inconsistent with frankly, what's right across the street.
Well, now you're getting into my second point, which is, you know, the question of-- Which is basically a question of the vision of the overlay, right? Say, "Well, we don't have the type of area that the overlay, you know, is pressing for." But that's the point of the overlay, right? We've decided what we want that area to be, not a decision on what it is right now. And so to me, to immediately come in and say, "Well, these don't mesh with what's there," I mean, that's kind of-- Ignores the whole point of the overlay. We had decided that we have a specific corridor here with a specific vision, and we put the work in to put that overlay together, and now we're saying, "Well, first of all, we don't want our own city project to have to adhere to those rules." And secondly, that, you know, that it's-- Well, it's impossible for a grocery store to adhere to them because of the, you know, peculiarities of that type of program. But then you listed one locally that has done that exact thing. I know the uptown market is absolutely an exception to the rule around here, but it's proven that it works. So I don't know that it's a burden on the developer necessarily to be creative and figure it out. And that's, I mean, that's kind of the point of a lot of these rules that we implement, correct? It seems to me that it's like, "Well, we want to keep flexibility, right? That's what we keep here." And that, "Well, it's tough to adhere to these guidelines on these project types." I mean, I'm sorry, but I think that's not our problem in the end. I think we've asked-- Pardon me. We've asked for a specific vision, and I think it's a fair request.
Understood.
I just-- I don't buy that it's too tough and limits the options for development. I think you got to get a more creative architect onboard.
Well, I'm not an architect, so I'm not going to critique the architects. But if you think about the store on May, it sits in a unique site that my understanding, as I try to visualize it, really doesn't front another arterial, right? So think of Whole Foods. I don't think any-- Maybe I'm wrong. I don't think anybody would say Whole Foods is a poorly designed, and it addresses the streets in the same manner that we're intending to address this. Western is the side of house, whereas it fronts grand, parking in front, then the store similar to what we're doing here with fronting, addressing Lincoln.
I actually totally agree, but I think the setup-- I think you're, in this case, saying that Western at Whole Foods, in this case, is 36th Street.
Yeah.
And I would say the Western side of Whole Foods, in this case, is Lincoln. It is the more traffic street, it's the more prominent. And so I don't see why you can't do exactly what you're saying you're going to do for 36, but just rotate it a little bit into the corner and have it address Lincoln, and be in compliance with the overlay.
So the way that the specific tenants are intending to develop this site simply doesn't allow that?
That's my point, though, right? It's not that they can't, it's that they don't want to.
I think it's that they don't believe that it would be the best use and design for this particular store on this piece of property.
Yeah, well, yeah. I'll leave it up to the commissioners. It's just my opinion that--
Fair enough.
That is, you know, that wasn't the point of the overlay, is to immediately come in and say, "Well, we don't want to do that. We don't want to have to." And we'll say, "Okay." That's why I can't support it in this version. Love everything about the project and the intentions behind it, but I think, like, to me, this just isn't compelling. It's not a compelling argument, so--
I think the entirety of northeast Oklahoma City would disagree with that, but fair enough.
Again, I'm totally for the uses. I think it's critical. I think we need it. It seems like you're almost leveraging the need to get what the client wants in their laziness. And I hate to say laziness, but, I mean, that's kind of what it feels like.
Well, to be fair to their client, reinventing the wheel at this stage of the grocery game is dangerous business. I respect the fact that they want to stick with what works. I also, I hear your point on the overlay, as I thought through this, at least from my perspective, just to kind of give a different opinion, you know, I wasn't involved when other overlays were put in place, right? Or when those discussions got had. I got appointed to the Planning Commission in the middle of this deal, and you sort of walk into it. I think what makes this one unique, and I went back and actually pulled my notes from our May 24th, 2018 UDC-- I got appointed to the planning commission in the middle of this deal, and you sort of walk into it. I think what makes this one unique, and I went back and actually pulled my notes from our May 24th, 2018 UDC, which we were told essentially, OMS approached Oklahoma City and the Planning Department to request a consideration of design review process along Lincoln Boulevard. It doesn't, these other overlays that it mentions in the same report, Capitol Hill, Paseo, Asian District, Northwest 23rd Plaza, these are things that were much more defined in what their existing development was. There was a, and again, I walked in the middle of it, but I think there was a fear of sorts about what type of development might occur as Lincoln redevelops. So when you look at the overlay, it's not that I think we're throwing the whole thing out the window when the first thing comes through the door. I think like any other application, we're being asked to balance, right, the integrity of the overlay and its importance against the importance of a specific project to an area. To me, that's how I look at it. And because they don't want to comply, it's like, "Well, do we want to force an overlay or do we want a project?" That's the way I look at it. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's the way I look at it. And I'm taking feedback from Mr. Warrior and other people who are community, someone who messaged me honestly, in support of this project, from the ward. It's obviously important, and I think having a project like this take place at the corner of 36th and Lincoln is really important. If this is the design that they want to go with, for me balancing in favor of giving them what they want and bending the overlay, which maybe the overlay needs to be looked at again, maybe that's the challenge. Maybe it's that we wanted it to be something and we've made it too stringent and we've got a problem and we should get ahead of it before we see more of these things come through. Because I think it's probably likely that a development like this encourages and takes off for other development in that area. And so we're going to see more of it. What is it about the overlay we want to preserve? What is it that's important? I think that's something we can all think about, especially those of us that participated, some of which participated halfway through the process and others not at all. But I'm in favor of the project. I think this is important to the area. I think the stakeholders want it. I think the ward wants it. I wish Commissioner Pennington were here so he could weigh in on this issue in particular, but I think we should push this application forward. That's my opinion.
Just a quick response to that. I get it, and I think this is likely to pass today anyway, but I think we get the city that we build for and we continually set a goal as a city and then back offer. And to me, it's simply us having the courage to stick to our guns. That's how the city got Uptown Market. They fought for that, and they fought for the design and the approach that that project had. I was involved with the City of the Village, I mean, this is anecdotal, but I did the plan review for the City of the Village for that. And trust me, you know, they didn't want to do most of what they did there. And you get what you ask for, you know? And if we're going to say, "Well, okay, well, in this project, it's not as important, let's just go for it." I just think, you know, first big project out the door for the Lincoln overlay, and we're ready to call it. That's just how I feel about it, anyway.
So here's what I would say about that. I think, perhaps unfortunately, this applicant is the beneficiary of there being truth in both sides of this argument. I think, you know, when the Northeast Renaissance overlay was first initiated and envisioned, Lincoln Boulevard was viewed almost as a blank slate, you know? Everything on it had been, was either dilapidated, it needed to be torn down or had been torn down. And there was, I don't know if I would call it fair, but there was a very definite concern about what would be built along what is, you know, a very important corridor. It leads up to the Capitol. Historically, it has been seen as, you know, sort of a gateway, almost to the state because the Capitol is there. There were competing forces for utility and servicing the kinds of businesses and needs that the Capitol requires versus the scenic element of it. The overlay we have is based on an urban model, and I think it is not inappropriate for us to think about whether that is the model that really fits Lincoln Boulevard. There is industrial development on the west, it's not going anywhere, it's not in transition, it's not moving. And there is enough residential development on the east side of it that basically was just left out of the consideration process because it was too complicated to include it politically, I would say. So, you know, what we had was a vision for how Lincoln might develop, but I think, you know, now that we're moving forward with perhaps the actual redevelopment of Lincoln, and I agree with Commissioner Cravens, that this development is very likely to set a tone and to spark other development around it. Whether that development ought to be on an urban development model is something that it is worthwhile for us to perhaps reconsider, but certainly to think about as we go along. I am not at all in disagreement with the idea that when we set our standards, we should require that they be adhered to. But I have to say, given the experience that we've had thus far about what's actually happening or proposed to be happening on the ground versus the vision that we modeled our overlay on, whether it was the right vision, whether it's the right model, is something that it behooves us to ask, I think, so...
Well, and just like a lot of things, right? Sometimes things don't always happen the way you envision, but I would argue that the overlay is doing exactly what it's intended to do in large part, which is to force this conversation to be had and to prevent development that doesn't include the conversation, which is really, how should Lincoln redevelop? So you make a plan, it's kind of like Plan OKC, or you have these overlays, it's, I mean, I always go back to the Board of Adjustment cases we heard on Cottage District, right? There was a vision there. Was it one-story, two-story? Who knows, right?
Picket fences?
Picket fences, yeah, who knows? But it evolved, and I think this will evolve. But I don't think that this, when I look at what the, when I read the sort of the preamble to the overlay, I don't feel like this is flying in the face of it. I feel like it's not respecting the stringent requirements that it had.
Well, that's also part of my point. I think the things that they are, that I'm hearing we are trying to get around, isn't even that big of an ask of them, to say 60% or 70% transparency on the senior wellness center on Lincoln Boulevard. You know, what I'm hearing is, "Well, we need to be flexible with our budget. You guys can figure it out." You know, like, I have experience in this industry, not that big a deal, let's be honest.
I believe you.
And so those kinds of things, it's like, let's just, you know, this isn't even that hard to be, to have that courage on, to say, "Come on, guys." And, you know, if we're saying, "Let's fill out the overlay, whatever, I just want my time back," because in the end, it's like, "Why did we do all this for?"
Well, I'm not saying that, but to your very specific point about the wellness center, you know, the idea of there being a two-story senior wellness center that faces west along Lincoln and is 60% minimum glass seems crazy.
A little warm.
I already commented on the two-story. I totally agree. I'm not a big fan of the two-story.
Well, one story is not going to be any cooler. You're still talking about a lot of glass facing west along Lincoln for, I just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I don't see it as that big a deal. I think, you know, plenty of buildings have westernly facing windows and manage it. I don't think it's a design issue, it just really isn't.
I genuinely do respect your position. I don't think that we're going to solve it today with all these people on wood benches. I'll just voice this, and we can turn it over to other commissioners. I'm in favor of the application. I think if there's no one else heard, we should voice our concerns, make a motion, and move this deal.
I actually have a couple of other questions, but...
I think this is an important project that's gone on way too long. This property's been empty for 40 years, and I think having a partner who's willing to work with the city and the neighborhood, this is a no-brainer regardless of what the rules were. Thank you to the partner for coming in and trying to make, to solve a city issue and to be successful as well as have the senior wellness center where it's going and to fix this hole at 36th and Lincoln that's literally been there for 40 years. I remember it that many years ago because I eat at Taco Rico right next door quite frequently. Being in the sign business, I admired the way they took the R and just put a R instead of Tico and made it Rico, but this is a great project and I think we need to move it forward.
Yeah, I agree. Same with Lincoln Plaza area. I mean, is that conforming to the, or is that in the overlay? I don't remember the redevelopment there.
The hotels?
The hotels, yeah, that's in the area, right? Do we know, does anybody know if that's going to be? Okay.
If it's going to be what?
Conforming to the overlay.
So the very specific questions that I had were whether we might include payday loan businesses along with tattoo parlors and bobby piercing shops.
So my understanding is the payday loan use unit is not in there already, it's not in there.
Is it a separate use unit?
Yeah, it is its own use unit.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry. I don't understand what this language means about uses with pickup windows such as coffee shops and delis. What are you trying to tell me there?
So that is the same language we spent some time on in the CLOPUD about how to, the problem with the code is the way that it deals with drive-throughs, as much as Commissioner Hinkle may like Taco Rico, perhaps others wouldn't want that on this side, but we wouldn't want to limit the ability to have Starbucks or some other, but you can't obviously deal with end-users. And so we've come up with this language that would allow for the Panera, the Starbucks, but would keep out the Taco Rico.
How so? I mean, I just don't understand the language, I guess. How does it differentiate between the kind of drive-up window you're talking about?
JJ on that. Because it's not, it's not, I mean, you might answer, but it's not the traditional fast food. And how building permit and development services deal with it, I'm not sure.
That's a semantics issue between pickup window and drive-through. What's the difference by definition?
I don't know.
I mean, even Panera has a...
They have a drive-through. Their new locations have drive-throughs.
Well, yeah, I mean, they have a speaker separate from the window itself. So I'm trying to think, what is the distinction that we're actually making here? I don't quite get it. Anybody want to weigh in? No?
I will tell you, this is the same language we've used in multiple other PUDs, SPODs for this.
It'd be great if we were doing a specific plan later and could discuss these things. Tell me what this language with respect to window signs means. What is a window sign as compared to other signs?
Show me what section we're looking at here.
You would ask me that. 9.10.6 on page eight of the staff report.
Are window signs somehow separate from other kinds of signs on a business in terms of the amount of signage people can have?
Now, signs in the window facing out are going to be counted the same as a wall sign.
It's just a sign.
It's just a sign.
Okay.
So the good news is, Mark Zitzel tells me that this was included because this is a provision in the Lincoln Boulevard overlay. And so we brought that in to meet part of the Lincoln Boulevard overlay.
Think about walking up to a grocery store and their...
Bread, $1.99.
$1.99 bread, and that poster goes away, and then the next day it's cantaloupes, three for five, I mean, whatever, but that's...
But technically speaking, that signage is not any different than the sign on the building.
Correct.
In terms of the amount of signage you're allowed and the coverage and so on.
I think it's trying to limit so it's not a bunch of clutter. To answer your question about tattoo parlors, yes, we can limit the convenience sales and personal services use unit to prohibit tattoo parlors.
My question was about payday loans.
Yeah, so that's just already prohibited.
Okay. And so last one, what was it? Why do you need five signs?
Flexibility. We don't know that, you know, what you will see after this is likely another piece that will rezone again, and so the ability to have multiple users on here, we don't want to limit the number of signs. At the beginning, we actually had no limit, and in talking to staff, we had no limit and pylon signs. In talking to staff, we negotiated a specific number. Now they're lower, now they're monument.
Well, you've only got three frontages. Why would you need more than three signs?
Because who knows what the future might hold.
We're kind of in the future business here, so, okay. Commissioners?
I want to just go back to this pickup window thing. I think this is to your detriment. Because here's what's going to happen. You're going to come back and try to get a permit at some point at one of these locations, wherever these exist in PUDs, and you're going to have a deli that has a drive-through, and there's going to be an argument about what the difference is between a pickup window and a drive-through window. And we can call an elevator a lift, or we can call it a vertical razor, it's still an elevator. You're going to wind up in a, I think you're going to have a problem, man. And so, I mean, if there's an intention here, I think we would be wise not to make the same mistake repetitively. There's a, that's a definition of insanity, I think, and try to come up with something else. If there's something we want to protect and you're trying to protect, there's got to be a middle ground here.
So we were just carrying it over so we can strike that piece of...
Well, that's not, you're going to get her all fired up in a second because that's exactly what she's trying to protect, is the prevention of just a straight-up Taco Rico. I don't know why picking on Taco Rico is fully good.
You misunderstand me. I wasn't trying to prevent anything. I was just curious about the distinction they were trying to draw. I don't see what the distinction is.
Well, then let's just strike it and leave it as drive-through windows. Because I don't have a problem with the use unit there, but I...
The only real difference in windows, you're going to have a walk-up window or a drive-up window. Now, what you can do is, we've done in other PUDs, is regulate the location of where you can have a restaurant with a drive-through window to be 150 feet away from any residential, 200 feet.
How about a walk-up window?
Why don't we just strike that language? The further restricted language.
Anybody else, I mean, somebody else weigh in here? I don't have a problem with drive-throughs. I don't see, I mean, I don't see what the issue is there. Looking to our neighborhood contingency out there.
I guess I do have some concern about it in terms of location. I wouldn't want it too near the neighborhood. Back in that northeast corner on Lindsey, a drive-through would be problematic, I think.
Yes, I think drive-throughs are problematic here. I think, to me, this, you know, this gets kind of my big point. I think it goes against...
We're going to have the same discussion on another case in a little bit, so...
I think it goes against the spirit of the overlay. I mean, it depends on if you...
What does?
If we care about the overlay or not.
Does the pharmacy have a drive-through?
Absolutely, we need a drive-through because there will be a pharmacy.
Well, this is only with the eating establishment.
That's right.
So it's a different use unit. Let's, how about walk-up windows?
I say we leave it as-is.
I don't have an objection to it. I'm trying to create a conversation here, I'm having it by myself.
I'm having it with you and...
Well, you don't count, you don't have a vote.
I gave you my feedback.
We've got one.
I don't have any problem with drive-throughs. I mean, they're all up and down Lincoln, it's like Drive-Thru City. I don't have any problem with drive-throughs.
Okay.
I have a problem with the drive-through near the R1. Can we limit where it is?
Like, it has to be at least 100, I mean, what we typically do is it has to be at least 150 feet away from an R1-developed property, is how we've done it in other PUDs and SPUDs where we have R1 in the area, is that it's required to be at least 150 feet away.
I can live with that.
Sounds like a TE.
I can live with that.
Okay, so what that means is we are asking to delete TE's four, seven, and eight. We are going to add TE number nine to prohibit the fast-food drive-through use unit, or it must be at least 150 feet away from residentially zoned property.
Were there other things that we needed to memorialize in terms of changes?
Not that I recall.
And just so we're clear, I want to make sure...
It's a specific plan thing, but...
That, and I want JJ just to acknowledge perhaps, that won't impact the drive-through pharmacy because it's accessory to the food and beverage retail sales use unit.
It's a different use unit.
No.
Okay.
Are we ready? Is it motion time?
No, because his...
Am I good to make a motion?
I think, I think so. Anybody else? Let me ask, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? We've kinda done that once, haven't we? Okay, let's do it.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the city council on PUD 1740, striking TE four, seven, and eight, and adding TE nine, which shall prohibit drive-through windows within 150 feet of a residentially zoned property, applicable to use units, 8300.36. You want me to, is that, are you good with the...
Why don't we just say prohibit the eating establishments, fast-food, drive-through, order window, 8300.36?
Eating establishments, fast food with drive-through window, 8300.36. Happy, comfortable with that? Good.
Second.
We got it.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 15 with deletion of four, seven, and nine.
Eight. Add nine.
And adding, adding a TE requiring separation of 150 feet for any fast-food drive-through from residential uses. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 has been continued. Item 17 is an application to rezone 1104 to 1106 Southeast 51st Street from R1 to C3, from, from R1 and C3 to I1.
Is our applicant present? Let's push this to the end of the agenda and see if he or she shows up.
Item 18 is a consideration of a proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan, located north of West Hefner Road and east of North County Line Road.
Good afternoon, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I'm filling in today for our comprehensive planning team. First, an apology, because in your staff report, I didn't notice until after the packet went out, that the agenda item reads, we'd be removing this from urban reserve. That is not the case, as the rest of the staff report reflects, but rather, it's designated urban reserve, I'm sorry, I did it again, employment reserve in the comprehensive plan. I don't have a, so, I'm so sorry, let me grab the clicker. We'll see if this works. Okay, so, the request is CPA 2019-0004. It's located, as you can see, at the northeast corner of Hefner and North County Line Road. It's associated with the next item on your agenda, which is a PUD 1737. That PUD is requesting single-family, two-family attached, three-family attached, which is not consistent with the existing employment reserve designation. Generally located here in the northwest portion of Oklahoma City, and, oh, a little bit back here, I'm sorry. Cindy, can you help me? Okay, so, zooming in, you can see the, the piece that's designated urban reserve was done so as part of a employment lands need assessment survey that was done back in 2013. This item is highlighted in pink today, our subject area. It was actually manually added to the employment reserve area because it was adjacent to a much larger site. If you remember, most everybody on this commission will probably remember that the, the area that shaded, or hatched in blue to the west, was at one time all employment reserve. It's about 500 acres. Over the past year and a half or so, this commission has approved of two different amendments to remove the, the 250 acres to the north of what's showing, and change that to urban low intensity. So, the site that we're looking at today is about, when we draw it, it's about 11 and a half acres. It's adjacent, as you can see, to the UL designation. I'd like to just kind of put this up here for anyone who's interested to know what we mean when I talk about these two different land use designations. The employment reserve layer, the description of that is that it reserves priority areas within the city for large industrial and business development essential for Oklahoma City's economic stability and future growth. And then, the, the part I wanna highlight right now is that this designation maintains large acreages, which is typically 25 acres or above. And that number comes from the Chamber of Commerce and what they typically look for in larger sites when trying to attract employment uses. The appropriate uses within ER areas are those that generate employment, and generally, the uses such as single-family residential, schools, and other civic uses are not appropriate unless they're proven to support other employment-related uses. If removed, the comprehensive plan would just remain the base layer, which is urban low intensity, and that, of course, is a lot of what you all see. Those are areas of the city that have urban and public, or urban levels of water, sewer, police, park, and fire services. So, looking at our site, it is fully served with water, it's fully served with wastewater, and it does have an urban level of response time for fire. Surrounding zoning is PUD 954. It's actually part of PUD 954. It's two different tracks. That PUD allows these two tracks to be both commercial and office, which are consistent with the employment reserve layer, and one of the reasons why it was manually added, we believe, to the area to the west. For the, to the north is PUD 1782. That's also a residential PUD, and as you can see, the two areas that were previously and recently rezoned to R1 at 122nd and County Line. Now, this is the existing condition of land use, so not zoning, but you can see all the yellow was residential, the green is either undeveloped or agricultural. There is single-family residential under construction at 122nd and County Line right now. So, when we looked at it, staff is recommending approval of the removal of the piece highlighted in pink, primarily because it, it doesn't meet that standard 25 acres that is normally desired and advocated for by the chamber. It's not fragmented and existing piece, it's kind of off there on its own, and so, in this instance, we're recommending approval.
Did you have anything you wanted to say about this?
No. I mean, it makes perfect sense. I assume that the reason it was grabbed, all the things that Sarah said, it was probably, it was pre-zoned, so the zoning was looked at, they were gonna designate this, they saw it was commercially zoned, they're looking at it on a two-dimensional map, so they grabbed it. I, I think logically speaking, it's a pretty awkward piece not to pull out of, you know, the employment reserve. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't have an issue with it at all.
I do have some folks who are, well... They're actually signed up to speak on item number 19, so, um... Since the two items are associated, I guess I would ask whether any of them would like to be heard on this item. I have several people who are signed up on item number 19. Do any of you wish to be heard on this item?
Okay. Does it, does it make sense to explain a little bit?
Yeah, so, companion item to their next one, I mean...
So, I'm sorry, I thought Sarah had done that fairly well.
I, I just mean what they would be commenting on, on this one versus the next one, why they're separate item.
So, this property is currently contained within an employment reserve designation under Oklahoma City's comprehensive plan. That means that it would be encouraged to be used for the development of large employment or some sort of associated or related use. There is a request that this property be developed in a way that is not consistent with that, and that application is item number 19, the item on which you're all signed up to speak. What, what this particular item is about is whether we're gonna take this property out of the employment reserve designation or leave it in the employment reserve designation. Staff is recommending that it be pulled out, and so, that's what we're getting ready to discuss perhaps and vote on now. My question is, since you have signed up to speak on an associated item, whether you have any comment you wish to make about whether the property should be pulled out of urban reserve? Come forward, please, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Joseph Nguyen. I live at 10921 Millbrook Lane. Um, yeah, I had more comments based on the, you know, the follow-up to the application, but I think it was a deliberate decision for them to pull this into the employment reserve because it was zoned commercial, and it's, that, there was a lot of thought put into that, because it's divided into two. O1, which is the north track, and then C2, which is the southern. O2 is designed to act as a buffer between residential and commercial activities, and so, our developer is here, and he probably could speak to more about history, but they've always had, our developer plus Lander always had the intent of making this something that could be beneficial to the community by bringing in retail amenities or employment, which is one of the top priorities of the city council. And I think, and I think that when they initially put this employment layer on top of it was to help reinforce and safeguard that existing zoning so that it can always be reserved for this type of use versus being turned into a residential area. I think one thing to really notice about this is, this residential area, there's no possibility of it connecting with, with that existing neighborhood, which is where I live. To the north, it's blocked off by houses, you can't walk, you're obviously not gonna drive through, so there's backyard, and then directly to the east is a pretty wide ditch, which you can't, and then there's houses on the other side of that.
So, I, I understand what you're saying. The comments that you're making now, though, really have to do with the associated application. The, the question here is whether this particular patchager, this particular piece of ground, is appropriately designated, as it is currently, to be reserved for large employment-related uses and, or employment uses or related uses. And, and that's the very narrow decision that we're getting ready to make, and I understand that that distinction may seem a little arbitrary at times, given how related the two are. But, very specifically, the question before us on this application is whether this piece of property ought to remain within the employment reserve.
I guess what would be the driver, to answer that question, I guess what was the driver to remove it, to go through the process and do that? Whenever this piece of land, you know, we don't wanna arbitrarily say it has a potential, but there's always a chance that somebody's gonna come in, you know, like you just said, you deal in future planning. There's always a chance that somebody's gonna come in and do something here. I know right now, there is, um, a proposal right now to go ahead and invest into residential, which we'll, we'll get into that later, but I don't really see why we're gonna go ahead and remove this and take the time and effort to do that, as it is appropriately zoned and currently.
I think the point she's trying to make, Joseph, which I, which I agree with, is you've got two issues. One is the zoning of the property, which is, well, we talked about last night at, at the neighborhood meeting, which we'll talk about next. In this instance, all we're talking about is, through the comp plan, the designation of employment reserve by definition is reserves priority areas for large industrial and business development essential for the city's economic stability and future growth. It's pretty hard to argue that it wasn't just, I'm, I'm, I'll call it an accident, honestly, to grab this small amount of acreage and say that it is, it fits that definition within the comp plan. I, I don't see that it fits that definition. Regardless of what the underlying zoning is, it doesn't fit that definition. The zoning conversation is another one, but your point is well-taken, that by putting the employment reserve there, it sort of solidified the, the, the commercial zoning that you saw when you...
Purchased a lot, yeah, moved in, yeah.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, sorry, I, obviously, this is much more narrow than what I'm looking at, but yeah, you're probably not gonna be able to put large-scale industrial there. It's 11 acres, it's probably gonna fit more like a shopping center, very similar to what we, what they did at Glenhurst, where they placed the library and that shopping center there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioners?
No discussion? Make a motion to approve the comp plan amendment for CPA 2019-0004.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 18. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Coffey? Thank you. It is approved.
Item 19 is the associated application to rezone property to, to PUD 1737.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD application to take it from PUD 954 to PUD 1737 that would allow for the ability to have duplex and attached single-family development. We, we were able to have a neighborhood meeting, my understanding is Commissioner Cravens had an additional neighborhood meeting last night, and one of the, one of the discussion points was, you know, the perceived problem with what we were building, that being duplexes, that would be right up against the single-family neighborhood to the north, and, and what measures we could take to, to alleviate any potential conflict. I do wanna discuss briefly, uh, this is similar to another case that happened in Ward Eight on Council South Memorial, in which, you know, when you hear duplexes, I think people automatically go to the worst example of a duplex that they've seen. And what my client is intending to do here, similar to what he is currently doing up on council, is what you see on the screen before you. So, it's really, the concept is more of a, a modern type of duplex instead of the traditional duplex. I see Commissioner Highsmith smirking. But, I, I don't view these as incompatible use units. I, you, you see these throughout the city, and you're frankly starting to see them more and more, and, you know, these will be platted in a manner that you could, you could sell the individual sides of, of the structure. So, it, it's certainly consistent with the comprehensive plan of, of urban low. Staff has recommended approval. So, I wanna talk briefly about the TE's and then some of the additional things that Commissioner Cravens had, has spoken with me about based upon concerns from the neighbors. So, the TE number one, we agree to, will provide a vehicular connection. TE number two, we agree to, we will provide a pedestrian access, and we, we don't agree to TE three. TE three asks for a 10-foot landscape buffer along the north side of the PUD. The reason we don't agree to that is not because we don't want to buffer the people to the north. What you end up with when you are buffering a residential to residential is, we're gonna have a fence, they have a fence. What you do is create a 10-foot strip of, of dead land that nobody thinks about or remembers until they see, you know, sunflowers or other obnoxious type of weeds or volunteer trees growing up, and then how you get in there and, and deal with it. So, it frankly creates, I think, a worst-case scenario for all parties involved. And so, one of the ways to, to deal with that, one of the questions asked by Commissioner Cravens was, what additional measures can we, can we incorporate into the PUD that, that would be put on the northern piece of our PUD? And so, what we can do is, we can increase the setback. The setback currently within this track is 10 feet, and so, along this northern line, we can agree to increase the setback from 10 to 15 feet. Along that northern line, rather than the standard six-foot fence, we can agree to do an eight-foot fence. Some of the additional things that we agree to, this will certainly make Commissioner Highsmith happy, we agreed to eliminate one of the access points off of County Line. As I said, we will connect the tracks via a vehicular connection. One of the other concerns when you look at this concept plan, it labeled one of the common areas as a dog park. We will eliminate the desire to do a dog park. And then, the multifamily use unit, they want us to take that out. And talking with staff, it was staff that requested we put that back, put that in. We are fine with removing that, but I wanna make sure, we can remove the multifamily use unit, cause we have no intention whatsoever, nor do we want to get approved, the ability for this to be developed for an apartment complex. Primarily, the concern is the attached single-family down here in the, the track that fronts on Hefner. What we can do is, I think, eliminate, and I'll defer to JJ, but we can eliminate the multifamily use unit, but then allow for what we have here, limiting the attached single-family to no more than three units per building. And I think that gets us where we need. So, these are more of a townhome type of development. We have no intention of developing a... it to no more than three attached units.
Did, did somebody request that you guys eliminate a dog park?
Yes, they did. And frankly, what, so I'll provide a little color, but first, just a couple of, a couple of comments on that. Where will the vehicular connection be between the two tracks?
D.
So, so on the site plan that was in the staff report, where the dumpster enclosure dead ends, you'll take that on north to where that sort of turnaround?
The intentions are both tracks to enjoy and use the same amenities.
Okay. And then which of the curb cuts along county line are you proposing to?
Southernmost.
So the one closest to the intersection. I like that the best. Okay. So the other thing that I just want to mention that I know was requested, and I wanted to make sure I know where the applicant stands on this, is the removal of stucco as the, as a building material, and also something about the opaque windows upstairs.
So, I mean, we'd prefer not to do the opaque if that's just real important. I mean, we could. I mean, the, so the whole thing with the opaque windows is really this, this idea that we're worried about people looking at us.
Right.
I think it, I, I don't agree with that idea.
Okay.
But if that is just, if that is what it takes to get it approved, then perhaps, you know, we could.
Well, I just want to, I want to make sure I knew where you were before neighbors addressed the issue, so.
We could remove stucco.
For those of us that weren't at the meeting?
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to do. So with that in mind, let me just back up a minute. So I attended a neighborhood meeting last night. It was at the Northwest Library. Basically, what I did was get the feedback of the concerns, the neighbors. These are the issues they voiced. I spoke to Council Box today and just said, hey, here are things you need to talk about with your applicant before you come in, because I know the neighbors are going to come in. I don't want a continuance over something because you guys didn't have time to think it through or something like that. So here are the issues they're going to bring up. You guys talk about these things, see where you stand, and then we can have a discussion as a commission and see where, where we are. To answer your specific question about the dog park, one of the folks, a couple of the folks, raised the issue that there are lots that back up to what would be the dog park. My suggestion at the meeting was simply to flip the dog park and the, the location of the dog park and the interior park, which is actually shown in white there on that site plan, just to remove frankly, what would essentially be 24/7 ability for people to take their dogs up to somebody else's fence and run around and go crazy. And I sort of sympathize with the, with the issue. I'd never faced it before. The reality is, those are markings of a common area. They're not necessarily anything, and they're not a promised amenity. They're simply a common area. So it's
Well, and, and calling it a dog park or not calling it one isn't going to keep people out
I understand.
...from their dogs.
But from the vantage point of the, of the neighborhood, it was the idea that we were going to dedicate this space to a dog park. They did not want that, and I, so I want to make sure they voiced that concern. I mentioned it to Council Box, and he didn't seem like it made a difference then one way or another. If it doesn't make a difference, but it's a concern for the neighbors, I'm inclined to support their, you know, desire to remove it.
I was just curious about that. I'm very curious about the windows.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
I guess the question is, what are we talking about on the opaque windows?
I'll let the neighbors address that if they want to do it. Those are just concerns that were brought up again at the neighborhood meeting. I want to make sure you guys are aware of it. So that's it.
Commissioners, I do have people signed up to speak. Do we have any other questions of our applicant before we hear from them? Okay. Mr. Nguyen, did you want to come back and talk to us, please?
Hi. Sorry if I repeat some of the stuff I said before, but basically from the presentation, I didn't really see any justification as to why we would need this and remove the commercial, current commercial zoning and put in R2, R3. And I didn't really see how this plan would benefit the overall community or comprehensive plan of the, of the city. I think it's important to take a look at all stakeholder perspectives, decision from the perspective of the city. It goes against a broader and established plan and against the priorities outlined outside. The land was zoned commercial in the original PUD, which was agreed upon by the developer and landowner, and their intention was always for a small commercial strip and office park to develop, creating something very similar to Glenhurst and the shopping center with the Sprouts on 122nd. It's evident that this plan is well thought out and was always the goal because the zoning of the north track directly behind the homes is O2, which can act as a buffer between residential and commercial activities. Adding the employment layer was, after it was already zoned, seemed to be a deliberate choice that shows the city and the developer agreed to the benefits of a commercial area that brings residents together and wanted to reinforce this by adding additional protections with the employment layer. Having the opportunity to develop this area commercially would add value and inclusiveness to the area by bringing skilled office jobs and community retail. For the future residents, I agree that it's really important to have a wide range of housing types in an area, and I support the initiative to connect the neighborhoods. In this situation, it's just not physically possible to do so, as you can see, because of the houses that border on the north and eastern sides. And I felt like this has always meant to be a sort of an island, so that light commercial business can function without disrupting the surrounding neighborhood. Residents of this development won't be able to easily connect with surrounding neighborhoods, nor will they have any access to essential services such as public transport, grocery stores, recreational parks. I feel like R2, R3 zoning is intended for higher dense, is intended to encourage higher density residential investment in areas that are close to and can easily reach these type of resources. And the fact that a planned dog, there's a planned dog park is evidence that the developer is aware of this, this lack of access. There are no sidewalks along Hefner Road or on county line, and a county line is especially dangerous since there's very little room between the road and the barge. I would not be comfortable walking up and down that road. And future residents will be isolated from the surrounding community. And from the proposed plan, which changed today, it looks like the two tracks would be isolated from each other. Current residents, including myself, purchased homes in this area under the premise that this tract would one day be developed commercial and did so with confidence due to the existing zoning and employment layers. Removing this goes against what we were promised at the time, and, and we made our home purchase with this, with the information that we knew to be true. We hope to enjoy the same retail amenities and potential employment as those found in the Glenhurst and Sprouts development. Valuable services would have been within walking distance, not only for Chapel Creek residents, but those in the neighborhoods across Hefner Road. And that's a space we would have been able to mingle with our other neighbors. Developers would be motivated to invest in new sidewalks and hopefully connect the communities to this new gathering place. Rezoning this area to medium density will take away the possibility of beneficial commercial investment. Something like this would have been, would have improved the well-being of the community and created a gathering place, not only for Chapel Creek residents, but those in the surrounding community. Including the new developments of Nichols Creek and the expansion of Ponterosa. Developing a residential area will create an isolated community instead of something that would have, that would have brought people together. To me, this seems like investment just for the sake of investment with the added cost to current and future residents. It goes against a long-term plan in the area and priorities of the city council. Allowing this rezoning to occur will lead to the creation of an isolated community that, again, doesn't follow any of the principles promoted by this commission. And the developers here to kind of also outline what the original plan was.
Thank you. You have any questions, Mr. Nguyen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, is it Sais? Sais? Just give us your name and address for the record, please. Pull the microphone down for you. There you go.
I think I need that. I'm a little short. It's Patty, P-A-T-T-I, Sais, S-A-I-Z. And we live at 10913 Millbrook, Millbrook Lane, which, if you go back to that other slide that you had that showed the new buildings, I want you to point out where we are, because we're on the Green Belt side. I'm amazed you can keep those all straight. You have the other one that's got the houses? The Green Belt is to the east and before the new houses and everything, the property you're talking about. And our house sits where, I can't read the footage, but they have something kind of written in the corners, one of those wedge-shaped ones on the east side of that Green Belt. I was just wondering whether you have anyone that's been contacted about the Green Belt, whether any of the building will affect any of the Green Belt down there. Mostly what we were concerned about has to do with the wildlife that we've seen that I didn't even know existed. Things like just the scissor tails. We used to have some scissor tails that were down there. It was the first times I had seen them up close. We've got a lot of other birds that are down there. We have the geese, we have mallards. They've actually raised some of their babies down there, so we've seen all of that. There's, when the monarchs came through, the butterflies, and that was one of the areas they'd been stomping in. So I don't know, as more houses come up, of course, they lose, you know, where they're supposed to go. And I was just wondering if there's any other places that they might have. I just want that part of it kind of left untouched, if at all possible, in that Green Belt where the ditch is.
Well, let's ask the applicant. What is it you're planning to do with your Green Belt?
Are you talking about the area that is shown in blue here? So that's outside the limits of what we're requesting, so nothing will be done. I believe it's platted as common area and another plat.
So
HOA-owned.
So your development will not affect that one way or the other?
That's right.
Okay. So will that be left with HOA then to take care of, as far as you know?
The HOA, whoever, whoever owns it, I mean, not these folks.
Yeah, currently, when they're, when they're mowing the lot, the property that you're talking about, whoever is mowing that is also have been taking care of that Green Belt area. And they changed whoever the person was taking care of it this last year. And previously, they would leave the grass still growing high, that's why all the birds and everything was coming to that area. But this last summer, about halfway through the summer, I guess a new guy came along and he just mowed it all down, and so we stopped seeing the, the birds as much. It kind of took out the Green Belt. So that was why I was getting a little concerned about what was going to happen, as to who was taking care of it.
The city may have had something to do with that.
My understanding is that it is actually their HOA
Okay.
...that owns and maintains that.
Okay. So it's your own HOA?
Yeah, and that's, that's all I was concerned about. Just wanted to mention that to you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
And I commend you. I didn't know anything about this group, but you guys do an amazing job, so I'm real impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, but helps. Sean Witt? I don't think I'm butchering that. Sean Witt, W-I-T-T. Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
That's Derek Justice, 10917 Millbrook Lane. I'm going to speak for Sean, he had to leave. So. Just first, I just start with something I didn't think about when I was going to come up here, but something this gentleman had said was, you know, planning for the city that you want. And so comments have been made about the area surrounding and how dense it is, how much more housing diversity has been developed there. And so as the city continues to grow and build more residential areas of all kinds of, you know, price range, styles, we're, we're taking away more and more ability to do these types of businesses for the surrounding community. So I think that there's certainly something worth considering there with how it's currently zoned. And then I'd like to address County Line Road. So as I understand it, there was a bond issue passed recently that allowed for resurfacing of County Line Road, but not widening of that. So as all these other residents, 122nd and County Line are emerging and the surrounding areas trying to develop this potential neighborhood here, there's, there's no room to widen these roads. It's not been allowed, and a bond issue can't be considered for another 10 years. So potentially 2027, you know, two years to even get that project done, or 2029. So to, you know, facilitate the amount of traffic, this is going to increase the area. We don't have the ability to do that. You're going to have two in and outs on, one on County Line, one on Hefner Road there. That's about an eighth of a mile to a quarter of a mile from an existing neighborhood entrance and from an intersection. Same thing on the County Line side. So right there, to me, that makes a, certainly a safety concern and a traffic issue for that area. And then, let me see what else I have here. The other thing I'd like to bring up would be that, yeah, the, the dog park. So I, you know, not familiar with all the dog parks in the city, but I've never seen one that butts up to residential neighborhoods. It's always been at a park or maybe near a veteran's office, somewhere like that. So to me, it doesn't make sense to have that, and I certainly would agree with removing that if this does go forward. And then one other thing we'd like to, to consider, you know, this is going to be called Chapel Creek Park, because as I understand it, so that infers that it ties in with the Chapel Creek community that is here. And for that reason, we'd like to see that, you know, certainly the areas that butt up and tie in with Chapel Creek area, that they would have a similar lot size, you know, something in the 60% range or even more that matches to really, you know, merge the areas and show that it truly is that if this goes forward. So that's, that's what I have.
Do you have any questions with Mr. Justice?
I'm pleased to report to the commission that last night, Mr. Justice and I arm wrestled at the neighborhood meeting, and I was victorious.
Okay.
Is that memorialized somewhere? That's why you had to bring it up.
Was that, was that to solve a point of contention, or?
I was just to prove, you know, how strong I was.
Is that everyone? Seems to me like I had one more. Yes. Carter Forey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And the commission members, I'm Carter Forey. I live at 5612 Northwest 118th Street. We are the original developers of Chapel Creek, and I just wanted to give you a little The Bailey family owned it. It was a brother and a sister. We bought the first tract along 80 on the north side, and then we bought the south when it became available. Mr. Bailey wanted to retain the 10 or 12 acres, whatever's on the corner, but he wanted that zoning put in place. I'm working with Dick Coyle and myself and others in the planning commission. We felt that offices, the residential type offices up on the north side, and then the residential, or the commercial down on the south side. We did Glenhurst also. We had that same type of zoning, and it worked out. Of course, this site is a little immature for that type of product right now, but will come into play at a later date. One of the requirements we had on the north end was we had to have our lot sizes, 70% of the lot sizes to the next subdivision to the north, because they didn't want those people moving in, as they said. But they had a larger lot and that type of thing. The Green Belt area is under a, Chapel Creek Homeowners Association owns it, maintains it. It's under a federal 404 permit. We had to work with the government on. Mr. Bailey donated two acres of his land, and we had to give up 12 lots. But anyway, it's, it's, it's a fine line with the federal government and the weed control people. So that's the way it is. I'll answer any questions, if you have any.
Well, I guess I would just put the point to you. Are you, are you protesting the change in the zoning?
I just wanted to give you some history.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners?
I never heard about these opaque windows.
There were people that spoke about that last night. I mean, so let me just, I'll just jump into it, and we'll see kind of where we are. So first of all, I appreciate the neighbors, a lot of whom aren't here, but for the people that came out last night, I appreciate your time. Very polite, very professional, and certainly have the best interest of the neighborhood at heart. In visiting with them, there were concerns that we share as a commission that I think they shared, and those are specifically the ones that you've already heard them address. The vehicular connectivity between the tracks, I brought that up with Council Box in our discussion about this because County Line is two-lane and because it is not scheduled for widening. And so by having those three outlets, you're essentially driving all of the traffic. My hope was that the most dense version of this development, which is the southern piece, would dump onto Hefner, which where it dumps out is still four lanes. It's a little behind where the turn lane is, which is probably a good thing long term. But at any rate, I think that, losing that access point really helps the pressure that's going to be found on County Line Road. It also eliminates a lot of that It also eliminates a lot of that turn-in-turn-out traffic that would come out of that neighborhood right by the intersection as it grows. And the other thing that I hope that it does is set our access alignment across the street, so we've removed it further from the intersection. Somebody from Traffic in the back, I hope, is like, yeah, that's got one win for Traffic. Anyway, so that's all great. I think the dog park is a reasonable concern. I wouldn't want, I would come in and argue against a dog park up against my fence. That's a common element, and I think the neighbors rightfully didn't understand that really it's akin to the picture we were shown of, you know, the duplex. It's a picture, it's a marking, it's really just a common area they have to have right in the plat, and that's what they're articulating. But I want to make sure we don't need to, I can't imagine that we do, put something in the record that reflects it won't be a dog park, but just to make sure the neighbors feel comfortable that that's going to be the case. I don't think we do.
We can, I don't, we're indifferent.
Okay. So, but on a general basis, here's the thing. The lot, this property was going to be developed commercially as it was zoned, and what I see here is just a mix of housing product. I'm not, I don't see anything when I look at it and slept on it that I think is really out of line, or it's going to dramatically alter the character of the area, the way that frankly it would if an eight-story office building under employment reserve was dropped down on top of this thing. And so, you know, to me, it's a compatible development. It increases the variance of types of housing product, which staff comments in the report is important, talks about that. I know there was some discussion about that at the meeting last night, and as I told you guys then, and I'll say again just for the record here, it's not for me to play market maker in what I think is and isn't a good product to put somewhere. The developer's taking that risk. We're here to assess whether that, from a use and density perspective, is appropriate. The biggest challenge that I think that we have here is certainly County Line Road being a two-lane road. That's the only piece of infrastructure concern I have. As you guys saw from the comp amendment presentation, everything else is green. Fire service is good. All those things are good. So I am supportive of the application as amended. There were a couple of concerns. I'm not in favor generally of things like opaque windows and things like that. You guys heard that discussion last night. I think that's, I think it's the wrong message. I think what I was sensitive to, as I look back at it, in the compatibility issue, which you referenced in your discussion, was how close the building will set to the fence line. I told him to come up with some mitigation measures to offer as a discussion point. He's moved that to 15 feet. He's increased the height of the fence to eight feet. Those are good concessions that I think satisfy staff's request in our packet. Plan conformance considerations could be strengthened by providing a vehicular connection between the tracks. Check. Specifying pedestrian access will be provided, which will add to TE1, and so check. And that's addressing the potential compatibility issues on the north boundary to PUD. It's a non-issue for them to change that type of product. We can't, I can't alter their, what they put or what they're willing to do with their application, but they've made some compatibility concessions there to try to accommodate the neighborhood's north line. I feel good about it. I think, you know, the best I can, I've satisfied, we're trying to satisfy the neighbors' concerns. I think they've done that. But from our standpoint, I think this is appropriate, and I think it should go forward. That's my opinion.
So you guys aren't putting opaque windows in your project?
Correct.
Okay, good.
The question about opaque windows generally has only come up in the context of like infill development, generally where you're putting multiple single-family uses on a single lot. I mean, really, you know, tight, very close, where you're talking about being able to sort of look across, and it's not so much looking over the fence of neighbors. My next-door neighbors look over my fence all the time, I mean, if they care to. If you have a two-story house and a six-foot fence, you can see across. But these units are not any taller than would normally be allowed if they were single-family residences, nor are they, you know, so close that they could reach out and touch the unit next door. So, I mean, this is really kind of not the context in which that discussion usually arises.
I didn't give them the specifics, but there was a case we saw that was in Commissioner Hinkle's ward, it was where an office building, a two-story office building was built up against a neighborhood at 100, I think 19th and 10th, if I'm not mistaken, just south of that, where the new grocery store was going to go. And there was an office development there, and they put in opaque windows as a concession for being commercial development, which I felt like was an appropriate mitigation measure, you know. I mean, that makes sense, and I expressed that. I mean, I did, I expressed that last night at the meeting, that that's not where you, you don't see it in this context. So you can plant trees, and that's what I said last night, and I'll say it again. So, yeah.
Yeah, my comment was only just, it's not that they're never appropriate, I just don't think this is the right place for that, so.
Well, without the opaque windows, I have no problem with this item either. If anybody else has any comments, I'll make a motion, I guess. Is this, this is your award, right? You're the motion guy, all right.
If there's no more discussion on this, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1737, amending PE1, just to stress that providing a vehicular connection track as well as pedestrian, because that was in the staff report, and I don't see the pedestrian track on the drawing, so.
So by agreeing to TE's 1 and 2, we've done both.
Have you?
Yes, TE1 is vehicular.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. My apologies.
It's deleting TE3.
Yep. So subject to TE1 and 2, deleting TE3, but adding into the master design statement the removal of 8200.12, the use unit for multifamily?
So we need to keep it, and what we're going to do is limited to no more than three attached units. So that will prohibit the apartment complex.
Okay, so limiting TE3 would be limiting 8200.12 to no more than?
No. TE3 deals with a 10-foot buffer. So delete TE3.
TE, yeah.
Add a TE, so I would propose to add the following TE's, if you'd.
Go ahead.
Okay, so add a TE to eliminate one access point from County Line. Add a TE to eliminate the dog park. Add a TE to limit the multifamily use unit to be prohibited to anything more than three attached units. Add a TE to increase the setback along the northern line to 15 feet. Add a TE to increase the fence height from six to eight. And then staff has requested an additional TE to see Mr. Justice and Mr. Craven's arm wrestle.
And wasn't there one more?
A one-time deal.
To remove Stucko as a competitor?
Remove Stucko.
Is staff comfortable that that's been effectively read into the record? Okay, so make a motion as read.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number 19, subject to the amendment of the technical evaluations as read. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Ah, yes, our applicant on 17 has rejoined us.
17 is an application to rezone 1104 to 1106 Southeast 51st Street from R1 and C3 to I1.
Hello?
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Abol Gossam Zalkeshan. The address is 1427 Southeast 30th, and for rezoning, 1104 and 1106 Southeast 51st.
So what you're trying to do here is to change the zoning to permit auto sales, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you okay with eliminating the R1 tract? Are you okay with eliminating the R1 tract that's currently kind of attached to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
Pretty straightforward, across the street from another similar auto lot, but if he's in agreements with eliminating the R1 lot, then I would recommend approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number 17 with the elimination of that portion of the property which is zoned R1. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 20 is the final plat of 35 North, located at south of 192nd Street and east of North May Avenue.
Get out for me once again, David Box, 522 Culcore Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is a bit of a unique application in that you don't often, if ever, see plat for a multifamily development. This is a tract that typically is known as Valencia. If you think back to 2004, all of this was essentially farmland. Nothing existed out here. And around that time, there were zoning applications on this section of land, section of land to the west, in which large-scale developments were planned with significant thought. So PUD 1028 was 640 acres. At the time in which it was negotiated at the planning commission, it had almost every single use you could imagine. It had a significant chunk of single-family, it had multifamily, commercial, office, a little bit of everything. This was Ideal Homes Project, and so Richard McCowen was heavily involved in the design of this. And at the time, for whatever reason, the PUD required plating for all development. There was a lot of putts at the time that required that. In talking to staff, there have been numerous times in which staff has been willing, when asked, to administratively amend PUDs that require plating for commercial, office, and multifamily. The reason being, there is no need to subdivide the land, and that's all we're doing here, to subdivide the land when it won't be sold as individual units. When you look at the image before you, you see PUD 28, and what you see is really the plat that exists as PUD 28. The reason you would plat the single-family is because you are selling off individual units. I have no doubt that there are people here, and you're going to hear about density and apartments and schools. I want to stress that, in my opinion, and I will defer to your municipal councillor, that has absolutely no relevance whatsoever to this discussion. This is a final plat. So what's at issue in a final plat is, does the plat meet the subdivision regulations? Does it meet the zoning ordinance? In this case, the zoning ordinance is PUD 1028. It does. Staff recommends approval because it does. I would submit that this would have been a consent agenda item but for the protest. We did have a neighborhood meeting last week, and we discussed the plat, and we showed them the image you see before you as frankly a courtesy, to show them what it is that will be built. Your planning director, your assistant municipal councillor were there with me as well. And one of the things that is important to note is, going back to the original design and the level of thought that was given to this PUD, it wasn't as simple as we'll plug the multifamily there, we'll plug the single-family there. We have one issue that runs through this property that serves as, I think, as a benefit to the neighbors, in that this area right here is a pipeline. At the time of the PUD, the required setback from the property line of these folks to any development within this tract was 50 feet. Because of the way the pipeline falls and other issues, we are actually 71 feet 8 inches from this line to them, to our first structure. Additionally, at the time of the PUD, it was required that the southern line of this tract in the PUD, all of these structures along the south are required to be two stories rather than three. So having a two-story structure here is not dissimilar to the two-story structures here. So as it relates to the concern about multifamily, what I would submit is, everyone that purchased homes or built homes in Valencia could have been and should have been on notice that there would be a multifamily project here, that PUD has been in place prior to anyone in that neighborhood moving in. The roadway network here is four lanes along 192nd, it's four lanes along May. I believe that what we propose, again, it's a single lot, conforms to each and every regulation that you, as the planning commission, must consider when analyzing a plat. There are no variances. We comply with everything. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant?
No. You have quite a few people that are signed up to speak.
I have a handful.
Okay. So the first thing I would just say on this is, I want to apologize to, and I don't know who's here for this application, but to the neighbors, it's a little bit confusing when these plat applications come through, because I cannot, in a final plat scenario, engage with you the way you heard that I engaged with the people in the zoning process before. So I don't want you to think that I didn't think that this application was important or anything of that nature. It's that I've been advised by municipal councillor that these are quasi-judicial matters, and I'm not supposed to engage with you guys outside. So appreciate the city staff doing that. I know you guys have had communication with them, but I just want you to know that for me. The second thing I would say is, I'm, this is very challenging, and I'm going to make the neighbors mad for saying this, but the zoning aspect of this, which is a use and density discussion, has already been had. It got had in 2004, and whoever sat in this chair before me made the decision that this application should go through with multifamily as a part of that. The plat is a matter of ensuring that the development they're going to build or make as a result of the underlying zoning is in compliance with our subdivision regulations. And per our staff report, it says the design of this final plat conforms to the subdivision regulations as they relate to multifamily subdivisions. The design also conforms to the requirements of PUD 1028. I'm in agreement with the applicant that had there not been protest on the issue, this probably would have been a consent agenda item, and it wouldn't have had any discussion from our group. That's very typical. It's not just this application. It happens in all applications like this, unless it doesn't conform, and a variance would be required. What I would say too is, there's always a discussion that takes place in neighborhoods regarding how this impacts the school systems. And I think that we have, as a city, probably not done a great job of working with school districts to keep a dialogue going about what developments are going on, how much product is coming to market. If you want me to take responsibility for that, I'll bear that burden, okay? But that's something we have to improve upon, but that's not within our purview either. We don't decide where schools get built, when they get built, how they get built. That's not what we do. If you guys were here early on, you saw the city of Edmund come forward with an application to build a school, and you see what we're putting them through to make sure they get it done right. I know the traffic is an issue here. I know that. I don't, we've heard this before, we've had lots of applications come through and have talked about traffic. We know it's an issue. It takes a long time for that to catch up, and I know that's a frustration, but that's not something that we can hold against the applicant in a final plat situation. It's really not something we'd hold against them in a zoning situation. As he points out, the infrastructure is four lanes on both of these arterial roads, which staff would tell you is more than adequate to service residential areas, highly dense areas, despite how it feels when you're driving in at 5 o'clock or 3 o'clock. So I want to confine our conversation to the final plat to the best of our ability, but I also know that you guys came down, I want to hear it. I just want to make sure that you filter that conversation appropriately, because we are not here today to decide use and density. We're here to see if it conforms with the subdivision regulations, and staff has told us that it does. So that's where we are. I'll just tell you before we get started, I have to support the application because of that reason alone, and you guys came all the way down here, I want to hear it, but we're, I'd be hard-pressed not to move forward here.
Ask our visitors to come speak to us? If not, I can't read this. Jeremy, it looks like Piantech.
I'm eating like a banana.
Oh.
Actually, I'm going to add one thing right before this gentleman talks. I would love whoever found this study and added it to our packet to let us know if they're here and they come forward.
Okay.
I find it fascinating, and I just want to, I think I might grab them afterwards and...
Are you referring to the master's thesis that I included?
Yes.
With the semel, that was me.
Okay, perfect.
So, thank you, commissioners, councillor. I think that we see, my name is Jeremy Plantin, I live at 18604 Avierto, which sits right in the middle of this subdivision. I think we see, and to Commissioner Craven's points, I think we're at sort of a Sisyphean struggle, you know, from the perspective of the neighborhood. I think my counter to that would be, I don't think that at any level, and I work in the public sector where we have to have public engagement pretty frequently, I don't think at any level that there was adequate public engagement on this. There may be some disagreement about that here, but, you know, this was really brought to our attention when we had equipment on the ground moving dirt around. And I think, you know, the developer, the applicant's public meeting was largely in response to the protest. It wasn't about actually engaging the community. I also think that there's a lot of anecdotal evidence out there that's primarily put forth by apartment developers that would say that these are not negative impacts on community... by apartment developers that would say that these are not negative impacts on communities, which is why I included that master's thesis, because I think that was a good empirical statistical analysis of the impact these apartments have. And I'm in full agreement when it comes to the way that this PUD was decided and designed in 2004, that these are supposed to be multifamily developments. You'll not get any argument from me on that. I think though, that we need to be cognizant about the prudent level of development that we do here. And so just because it's a multifamily development does not mean that it needs to be a 371-unit, 35 or 40-foot-tall, you know, massive apartment complex. This is a big complex. This is not the same size as the one that sits a mile down the road, it's not the same size as the ones that are also in the surrounding areas, presumably the one that will be down at the southeast corner of our subdivision that's on the next item. So I think that there's a way that a dialogue can happen, so that both the community's concerns and needs are addressed, and that the developers' need to monetize their investments are addressed as well. I don't think that that's happening here. I think that this is a really one-sided argument, and I understand that we're kind of at the tail end of it, and this is maybe not the appropriate venue to address that, that should have been done earlier, but this is the venue that we have. And I would also say that in terms of the traffic analysis, you're correct that these are functionally classified urban collector routes. We would anticipate, based on typical highway capacity studies or roadway capacity studies, that these would handle about 30,000 to 40,000 vehicles worth of throughput, which certainly is well within the range of what we expect right now. I think we have ADT counts of around 15,000 at this intersection, we expect those to, you know, trend upwards at about 2% to 3% to maybe 4% over the next 10 years. But I think the issue is that because of the awkward shape of this parcel, your ingress and egress points, like I pointed out in that response that I filed, are really problematic. And I think especially for the one that lies closest to that intersection on 192nd Street, that one actually empties right into the left turn bay for the westbound traffic, which is a significant traffic safety concern right off the bat. It's also really close to the intersection for the traffic running eastbound, and that's why I included that map in there as well. So this would not be what I would expect, from my experiences, to be an acceptable sort of design at this stage. Understanding that the city can respond to this and put in prohibited left turns and signalization, that kind of thing, but that infrastructure does not exist there right now. And so I would say, if this were to cross my desk, I would say that that driveway is probably something that should not be allowed. But then you run into the issue of you're moving all of that traffic inflow and outflow to those other two driveways. The one that's a little bit further down on 192nd Street, that one is probably adequate for the amount of traffic and the amount of population that we expect in this area. However, that one that's on South May, as I said in there, empties right next to a daycare center, and you'd expect the primary trip generation to occur at the same time people are dropping kids off and picking them up, in addition to that being pretty close to that signalized intersection. And so again, you create kind of these artificial bottlenecks, simply because you're trying to accommodate a really dense residential structure, residential development right in that area. Like I say, I think that there's more responsible ways, more appropriate ways to develop this, still maintain the vision of the plat, but still respond to the needs and the urges of the community.
I agree with everything you said, particularly this, which I share your frustration about, which is that the process that was engaged in in 2004, and the stakeholders that were there to participate at that time, to go forward 15 years, right, I do not take anything away from you guys, that is really frustrating, I don't. And I'm, and I hate that that's the way that this process has unfolded, instead of, they're coming in for a rezoning application, and the process you sat through before is what's taking place today. All the egress, all the design, all of that was addressed in the PUD, this plat conforms with it. And so essentially, at that point, we're really handcuffed, right? And so I know that's frustrating, and I do appreciate your comments, I do appreciate you coming down. I read what you included too, which I thought was interesting, probably for different reasons than Mr. Highsmith did, but I found it interesting too. And, you know, I wish that this were a different process, that we could have this discussion, and I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
My quick comment on this is that, just so I'm clear, PUD 1028, which includes the neighborhood to the south, this tract was part of that? Yeah. So when we're, where do you live, in what neighborhood?
So I live in Valencia, I'm about, as the curl flies, maybe a little over a quarter-mile away. So my house is actually dead center in the middle of the section that Valencia sits on, so...
And it was developed as part of this PUD?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Which was, which this tract was included, so you're, so basically, the zoning for this was done before your house was built?
That's accurate. So this is done in 2004, my house was built in 2011, or fall of 2010, going into early 2011.
Well, I guess my question real quick is, how can we get neighborhood engagement if the homes haven't even been built yet, and nobody lives there?
Well, timeout. So there's a double-edged sword here, because at the time that it was built, I don't know what was there, I don't know what existed, right? But this was zoned, it was legally, lawfully zoned. It's been zoned for 15 years. We're not going to come in here and armchair quarterback it now, but the flip side of that is, on the development side, we always, we have people come in here all the time and say, "My realtor told me this was going to be a field for butterflies for the rest of all eternity," right? And they're frustrated by that. There's a publicly accessible way to ascertain the zoning of your property that's in place at any point, and there's, and I know that's probably aggravating to hear me say that, but... I'm not in, pardon me for interrupting, but I'm not in disagreement with that at all. I mean, again, I work in the public sector, I deal with this planning-level stuff, as you can probably tell by the protest I filed, on a regular basis, a daily basis. So you're getting an argument from me that we would expect this to be just a field with butterflies from here to eternity. But that said, I think that there's a responsible way to develop versus just cramming as many units as we possibly can get in, because it follows the letter of the law, and then in eight or 10 or 12 years, once the developers have made their money back, then that, we start with that race to the bottom, where you start worrying about occupancy rates, and so the quality of, you know, the people that are living there goes down, crime rates go up, all of those things get affected, as I addressed in that document. So again, you're not going to get any argument from me on that this needs to be undeveloped, or that it should be single-family homes, or anything like that. I fully understand and respect the decision of that PUD, I just think that we can do a better job with engaging our communities and developing things in a way that, you know, fit the visions of both the developer and the residents in there.
Well, your point is well taken, and this area has become very sensitive for me as the representative of the ward. I mean, I represent you in these things, and you're not the first people to come in and talk about the frustration of apartments. A long time ago, an awful lot of land was zoned for apartments out here, and we got a lot of challenges as a result of that now, as that growth comes to fruition, with schools and roads and all that stuff is an issue, and it's not that we're not aware of it, candidly, we're behind how to fix it right. I want to be a part of that process, I think that's what we got to focus on, but we can't do that today, and it won't start with this application, because this was 15 years ago.
Yeah, and I'm not going to make any kind of argument here, I'm just making sure I understood the timeline, and to me, yeah, I mean...
A lot changes in 15, 18 years.
Sure, but, I mean, that calls into the question the entire concept of zoning, and that's not something we're going to get into here today either.
Sure.
But sticking to what we can talk about today, do you have any comments about the plat as is?
I do not.
Okay.
So I guess the one thing I would say about that is, the specific plan process was implemented, at least in part, to try to address some of those issues. If this property were coming in to us today not for plat approval, but for a specific plan approval, we would at least have the opportunity to impact the design of the development. But that process was not in place 15 years ago, so that's not part of the PUD that was Jenny Street?
Jenny Street, I live in Valencia, 18132 Viento Drive. I've lived there for 13 years, 2006, same deal. I understand that, no matter what I say, it's really not going to change the outcome, but I started this, just like everyone has said, they see the dirt mound, and we didn't know where to go from there, and so we started a petition, we started calling people, doing things, media, everything, so that's why I'm here. We're going to see this thing through. I don't think a 371-unit apartment complex is right for that. I have been in the Deer Creek School District for 13 years, and I have kids from 5 to 19. The Deer Creek School District did give me information to help with this nice thing right here. But anyways, in any event, like I said, I know that it's not going to change the outcome of today, however, I did want to at least show up and follow through with today, because I said I was going to do it, so...
I'm glad you did, and I said what I said at the outset, because I didn't want you to think that your voice wasn't being heard, it's just being heard differently. And I appreciate you coming down, and I know, I mean, I knew what the concerns would be, and again, I apologize that I couldn't visit with you about it ahead of time.
Oh, no, I mean, it's not a problem, it's just like Mr. Highsmith said, is that, you know, I built my house in 2006, so I could have done my due diligence, and I could have looked up all the information through public record, and I could have looked up what it was zoned for, but how could I foresee the future that in 13 years, I'm supposed to know what's going to be built there? I didn't know that a 371-unit apartment complex was going to be built there. Was I going to change my mind and be like, "Oh, you know what, let me go ahead and go build over in the Grove, because nothing's going to be built on any of their corners." I mean, it's just common sense. So obviously, laws need to be changed, and so I guess I'll just figure out how to do that, because obviously, planning and development needs to change going forward, so I guess that's my next step. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down.
Good luck on changing those laws.
Well, I mean, something's got to change.
To be fair, I think we've improved a little bit since 2004, but...
I think we have too.
I'd like to think so, anyway.
I was reading these comments at the end, but I mean, just things that have come up recently, there's been a lot of stuff here, and, you know, I talked to the planning department about one case that we had come through that seemed inconsequential, but this whole area from an infrastructure standpoint, and the school issue, all these frustrations that these people have, that's what it's really about. And so I get it, and I think there's probably something we could do to be a more active participant in a, you know, sort of multi-political subdivision process, and I'm not, I do not intend those comments to reflect poorly on staff or what the city's doing, I'm saying, and for all I know, those things are happening, I just want to make sure, because it's really hard to look at these folks in the face, or go to the meeting that I was at last night, and not wonder if we're doing everything we can to help school districts prepare and plan on their own with bond issues, you know? It's an eye-opening experience when somebody from Public Works hands you this binder, and this is the, literally, basically, the capital development plan for the city for the next five years. And so if this, if your street is not on here now, it's, if it's not a part of the, you know, 2017 bond issue or this, it's not going to get changed. And that's really hard for people to understand, that's why planning starts so far out. It's a really complex issue, and I just want you guys to know, I know it's frustrating, but there's nothing we can do about this one, but I hope we can do something about it going forward, I do.
Well, I appreciate that, we just need, I just feel like also, we want to be educated.
Come forward, please, if you're going to speak, so that...
I'm just really big in education, and so I feel like too, if my voice can be used in any way, shape, or form, there's a lot of people in our neighborhood that are young and don't really know the process or procedures or policies, or, you know, and if we can enlighten people and make people aware and educate them, then maybe they can make better decisions, maybe they can use the public record information and access and maybe start utilizing those things themselves, make better decisions. If you're more aware, you're going to be able to make better decisions. And so if you inform people, then they'll be able to, maybe in the future, they'll be able to know what it's zoned for, and what that zoning means, and what an R1, or R2, or C1, I mean, I've actually personally learned a lot myself, so if, you know, when I hear multi, what is it, multi-residential?
Multifamily, yeah.
Multifamily, I don't ever think of an apartment complex. I would have never, never, ever did I ever think I would ever need to know any of that information, and so...
Well, you can pass along to your neighbors, other residents that you follow up with after this meeting, if you go to OKC.gov, there is a zoning map, you can put your address in there, hit enter, and it'll bring up everything around you, and that's where the education process starts.
Right, and so I think maybe too, if people start using that, and we just make them more aware and educate people a little bit more, then maybe the future will be butterflies and rainbows.
There you go.
I'm just saying.
It's a good tagline.
Street, 2023. Just kidding.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Hill?
My name's Ryan Hill, 2601 Northwest 191st Street. Just, I guess I, like, it sounds like there's nothing that can be done or changed. Young family, three-year-old, that's, we wanted to be a part of the Deer Creek School District. We've lived there for two years, right along the fence line of this, and it's interesting that they've, you know, they wanted to make some concessions, or talk to us about it, but it seems like there's no changing, and like she said, we didn't know, first-time homebuyers, you know, trying to put our investment towards us, not towards somebody else's mortgage or somebody else's rent, and just blindsided, you know? It just feels like, you know, when we bought the house, the person we talked to, like, learning to talk to a used car salesman, and what your car is, you're about to buy has really been through, and what you really know, and me and neighbors, other people, you know, weren't told that this was happening. In fact, we were told the opposite. So we're stuck with what we've got, but I just wanted to say that I'm definite protest of it, and it's an unfortunate life learning lesson that's going to take up almost, you know, half a lifetime to learn. So this is the result, and, but thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming down.
That's all I have signed up to speak.
I can, one of the comments about the proximity of the drive, so on 192nd Street, we're almost 400 feet off of the intersection. On May, we are approximately 700 feet from the intersection. So this will have almost 40% open space. What Tract A, and this is Tract A in the PUD, Tract A actually allows for 572 units, this is 371, so it's 200 units less than what could have been built, and so, like I said, there will be 40% open space.
I get it. It's, as I noted, staff reports that it conforms with subdivision regulations, there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for C 7110.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of 35 North. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
It is approved.
And for the folks that came down, again, now that this case is over, feel free to reach out to me via email if there are other concerns in the area that you want us to know about. I will happily listen, so feel free to email me.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Item 21 is a final plat of Valencia Place, located north of Northwest 179th Street and east of North May Avenue. Good afternoon, Steve Owens, Arkingtonian Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road, admin representing the applicant. We are at the southwest corner of Valencia, a part of PUD 1028. Our final plat is 17.01 acres. We've got it divided up into three lots. Lot 1 is about 4.04 acres, and it's proposed to be developed as senior living center. Lot 2 is about 11.63 acres, and it's proposed to be developed as multifamily. And Lot 3 is on the hard corner, 1.34 acres, and I'm not sure about the development of that yet, but it'll probably be some sort of restaurant retail, commercial development. So with that, everything we're doing, again, we're doing in conformance with the PUD, with City of Oakland city ordinances, and we're in agreement with the TEs. I would ask for your approval. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Madam Chair, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
I do, I do have one person signed up to speak. Do we have any questions of our applicant before we call him up? No? Perhaps the benches were just too hard. Perhaps the benches were just too hard.
There's no further discussion. I'd note that the design of the final plaque conforms to subdivision regulations, as well as the PUD 1028. And I would make a motion to approve the item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Valencia Place. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item number 22, the final item, is a proposed resolution of the Planning Commission regarding the Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan.
Good afternoon. I'm Brett Bryant, the city's finance director. And it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning, this afternoon. I'm going to be, try to be brief. I've got a rather lengthy presentation, but if you want me to go long, I can. If you want me to go rather quickly, I can do that, too. So TIFF 9, I'll just give you a little brief information about that. Project plan was approved in 2015. It goes through 2041. Primarily follows the commercial corridor around northeast 23rd, North Kelly, MLK, and I-35. The estimates are increment will generate between $27 and $30 million in ad valorem, and $28 to $32 million in sales tax over the lifespan of the TIFF. Here's the current project plant, project area. Again, it expands all those, far north is 42nd Street, and it does go all the way out to the river. One of the things that we're doing, go to the next slide. Here's the actual increment area. One of the goals that we did when we created this increment district was to identify key corridors, key commercial areas, and then where we thought we could generate increment. And then we, you can see, from the previous, when we go back to this, you can see, oh, let me go to the next one. Then you see how we overlay the project area where we can actually spend the money. Because TIFF districts, as you're well aware, your increment district and your project area do not have to be the same. And from a strategic standpoint, it's good to kind of overlap them. So. The next one. The plan objectives are to assist with the implementation of a JFK urban renewal plan, the Northeast Renaissance TIFF plan. In addition to that, to redevelop and revitalize the area. This area has been neglected for a long period of time, and it's a council priority and staff priority to do everything we can to revitalize the area and promote economic development, retain and create jobs, and stimulate new investment. And the proposed amendments, what we're doing here is we're looking to establish a separate increment district east of Bryant. We're essentially going to take the existing rather wide area. We're going to shrink it. And the part that we're shrinking, we're going to make that TIFF C. And then we're going to add TIFF B, and we're going to add these additional ones. And here's what we're doing. As you can see to the right, you can see the outline in green, that's the new TIFF C. We're be pulling that out of the existing TIFF 9. And then in addition to that, we're adding some project area south of there. And then primarily what really pushed for this redevelopment are the, all the individual little areas where the Alliance for Economic Development is working with multiple property owners, and multiple developers, and trying to identify areas to redevelop. And they're all highlighted in B, and I'm going to go over those just briefly. First one is the Creston Hills School. Again, the Alliance has been working with the Oakland City Public Schools, revitalizing and renovating old, build, old schools. The next one is the Marcus Carvey area. And then the next one is the, at northeast 36th and Lincoln area. You can see there, there's commercial real estate there. And the next one is at MLK, and just north of 23rd. And then finally, the one at northeast 23rd Properties, over by the old Armory, just west of the state capitol. Our plan is, is to establish a separate increment area east of Bryant, like I talked about, and add additional increment areas. The plan is to retain and create new jobs by stimulating new investment. And we believe that this will actually stabilize our tax base and help us to create more increments, so we can do more investment in the community. As you all know, with TIFF, you've got to create, you've got to create the investment first, so it can create the increments, so you can turn around and reinvest that back into the area. And that's what our, what our goal is here. Before, and here's the process. We've gone to the TIFF Review Committee. We did that two weeks ago today. And they recommended it to the Planning Commission, these amendments. In addition to that, we'll come to you for your recommendation. Then we'll go to the City Council on the 19th of November, is our current plan. And then we'll go to, come back in December for a final approval by the City Council. I do want to recognize Wiley Williams. We went to, with the, what was in your packet, there was a minor adjustment we needed to make. And Wiley has some new handouts for you as relates to some of the maps. And I'll recognize Wiley Williams, and he'll help you with it. He'll explain all of that.
After I drafted the amended and restated plan agreement, I went back through it, and I found a couple of things that, as a lawyer, I'd like to improve upon. So on the planned document that you have, the first change is on the second page, in paragraph A, I changed Exhibit S to Exhibit T. I don't know why, when I was just reorganizing it, or organizing it, after proofing it, I made that Exhibit T. So that's a change there. And then...
Wiley, I'm sorry, you said that was where?
On page 2, in section 2, part A.
Oh, I see.
The very last sentence.
Yep.
It says Exhibit S, I think, on your version. The amended version has T. All of these are not, there's no substantive changes at all. It's just kind of technical changes. Then on page 4, in the first full paragraph, on the third line, I have described in Exhibit R, I changed that to Exhibit S. And then on the last page, on the list of exhibits, page 14, I made all of them consistent with what is in the amended plan. So you'll see Exhibit S and T, but the Exhibit R has gone away. There's no longer an Exhibit R. It became S, and S became T. And then on the exhibits, I changed out Exhibit A, that is in your packet, to the one that, you have that available? Okay. Do you have the amended version with you?
I'm sorry?
Okay. There's a slight difference in the maps. They say the same thing. The red areas are Increment B. We always assume that increment areas are part, is an area where you can do the project. However, to make it extremely clear, I got, I thought I would make it clearer that everything that's in the yellow includes the red dots. They've been added to the yellow.
Fair and...
Make it clear that...
I can't see it because it's...
Right.
On exhibit...
They are now part...
On exhibit...
Right.
C.
I didn't get to make the maps. I just had to use them. So. Then I traded out Map F in your packet, in your packet, with a better version that you did see on the slides a minute ago. And in the legend, I clearly say that the project area is all the yellow and the red dots. Those are all in the project area. I just wanted to make it real clear. And the other change I did was in Exhibit B, I added these two red, these two red dots to the project area legal description. And that's all the changes. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about it.
Does anybody have any questions?
How much, like, this average additional taxes would a current business owner?
I'm sorry?
Additional taxes is property taxes, just on the average, how much will they go up if it's added to the TIFF?
They will not go up. Taxes will not go up. This is, this is just a matter of, when you have investment occur in the area, the accounting assessor will assess you based on that incremental increase in value. And we're just capturing that increase, and that goes into the TIFF pot to use for, to promote investment, and to promote, or to fund any infrastructure investments that we may need.
This will also require an amendment to your resolution. I provided a copy to JJ, where I took out Exhibit R, and made Exhibit S and T on that. And that's it. We'd appreciate your support and endorsement of the plan.
Well, this happened last time. Just so you know, I found at least four errors in your legal description. You're going to need to go back and read it, literally, line by line. You can find all of them. And then you come back and let me know when you find them.
Somebody else did that. I haven't found them yet.
Keep looking. I promise, they're there.
Did you have, did you have anything further for us?
I did not have anything further.
Anything further?
So the addition of these schools to this area is concerned to me, not in a negative way. I mean, specifically, it's something I want to know more about.
Okay.
I keep asking people. Nobody seems to know anything about anything. I don't get any response from anyone.
Okay.
And I've been trying for, since the day that the school district announced that they were implementing a new plan.
Okay.
Find out what was going to become of the buildings that they were going to have to abandon, or change their use for. And it's like a stone wall. And that's very concerning to me. I saw a report on television one night about, that they were going to make a medical clinic out of some elementary school. And I thought, well, you know, most elementary schools are on R1 property, most medical clinics are not. So rather than have those things come to us, one at a time, piecemeal, to be, you know, told that we're in a big hurry and we need this now, as opposed to having some actual ability to do some planning, I think is, you know, problematic. And if you have any way to get me more information about that, I'd like to see it.
I will check into that, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'm curious what Ward 7 Councilwoman thinks about all this.
She supports everything that we have right here. She, she came to our TIFF Review Committee meeting two weeks ago, and was there in support of it.
We've just heard a lot lately about the city changing things in this area that they're not happy about. And like I said, I'm just curious if she was in full support of it.
City staff, along with the Alliance staff, have been working closely with her on these modifications through the project plan amendment.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Point of clarification, are we, are we adopting, are we, we're, we're being asked to adopt the resolution, right? Okay. That's what I thought. Is there, anybody else got anything?
I, I will just say that normally, this is the kind of thing that I would like to have had a study session to explore in a little bit more depth. But we are where we are.
What the statute requires is for the Planning Commission to find that it is consistent with Plan OKC. That is the only finding that's required from the Planning Commission.
Got it.
We don't know of anything that's inconsistent with Plan OKC.
Understood. So with that, I'll make a motion that we, I guess, approve the resolution then with a specific finding, that the proposed amendment and restated Northeast Renaissance Development Project Plan to be in conformance with Plan OKC, as amended, with changes read by the applicant. You agree with that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and approve item number 22. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our items to be heard. So we have additional items, communications and reports, Planning Commission committees, Planning Commission members. Do we want to go in order? Does anybody on here, anything they want to say? Tell us, Commissioner Cravens, what's on your mind.
Okay, I got three things, and I'm sorry. I'll, I'll keep it brief. We can talk about it later. So I got three concerns. Been here two years. I'm going to ask staff for the first time to actually help me with something, so I can get information out to people. I really want your help in getting this information, whatever. I'm not afraid to do some work, too, but I just, I need some help as to where to go. So the first thing is, has there ever been a, basically, a program where the Planning and Zoning Department makes outreach to the school districts in a collaborative way? Some sort of a forum or a panel discussion where we get Mustang, Yukon, Piedmont, I mean, I'm not deliberately leaving any out, I'm just making examples, to come in and talk about, here's a current zoning map. And in green, here are final plats that have been approved and are under construction. Here are zoned properties that have not yet been platted. And here is land, because of the comp plan, we believe would be suitable. So they see this progressive line of what's coming at them 10 or 15 years down the road. We have the same problem with streets. And here's the issue. Every person that calls me from my ward, and I'm sure, I don't know if you guys get these calls, or have had other things, especially Ward 3 with Mustang, things like that, is, what are you guys going to do about the schools? There's a disconnect in the public's understanding as to whether or not we have involvement in that, and what our involvement really is. And we can, we can sit here and tell them when they finally come down, that we don't have any responsibility for that, and leave them frustrated. Or we can try to help create a process where school districts are knowledgeable, and they can't say that. That way, when they come in, we can say, we have been providing this on an annual basis to your school district superintendent for the last decade. If they have not chosen to pass those bond issues, it's as much their fault as anybody else's. I, it's not about being a blame game, but I don't feel like that stuff's going on. Is it going on?
It has, so we, I'll give Mustang School District as an example. For years, we've been giving them information, detailed maps, because they, they've been proactive about making those requests. So for at least a decade, as long as I've been around, they'll ask for preliminary plats, building permit information. So we will send that to them as often as they ask. And, and also mentioned that, and JJ can cover this probably a little bit better, but the school districts receive everything, the packets. So they receive plats, they receive all these things as they come in, so that they can respond to it if they, if they desire, and certainly for their records. So Mustang is probably the best example. OKC schools, we worked with recently on their, on their process, their recent process that they went through. I was involved in that. And we provided all the data that we had to them. It was a, it was a good, good working relationship. So as much as, you know, we've been willing and able for years to do this, as much as school districts are, are interested, we are more than willing to help, to provide data, to do whatever we can. We have information that, that we think is valuable. So we're certainly more than willing to do that. It's not for lack of effort, or lack of willingness on our part. It is frustrating a bit, you know, when, when school districts don't avail themselves of the resources that we have available. And I will say, from experience in the past life, where I was consulting for school districts, very large school districts, the best ones, that's what they do. They have a planning staff who contacts cities, is always aware of development that's going on. They track it, they plan for it years in advance. And that's what growing school districts, especially fast-growing school, school districts really need to do to keep up with, with development.
Go ahead.
I just, I, I get all that. And I'm, I know that our resources as a city, right, again, I promise you, I'm, this is not, my comments are not reflective of staff. They're as thin as anywhere else. But I feel like we should play offense. I feel like we should try to set those meetings up. We should invite that. Because I think then, it's a lot harder to, it's really easy to say, well, we provide the information, we're here if they want to talk, right? Tell that to the people out there that have owned homes since 2006, that didn't know the property was zoned. And I know that from my desk, I can go find out how any piece of property is owned... And I know that from my desk, I can go find out how any piece of property is owned in Oklahoma City, because I, I know that, that's my business, right? It's, it's just, I would much rather say, man, we have a forum every year with your school district where we tell them what's coming. We, we invite them in to share this information because we want them to be aware. That's playing offense. And that's good business, I think, for the city. Because it's, it's also, I think, creates a dialogue too of what's coming, is Edmund Public Schools going to show up and want to put an elementary school at a hundred and fifty-first and Penn, which is an absolute nightmare, right? And what will that mean? And, you know, I, I got the coffee thing wrong. And the queue line on the coffee thing, I'm paying attention to the school, the coffee thing comes up, the coffee's probably a bigger problem than the school. It's just, like, these are things that I'm catching that I'm doing wrong, and I think there's a better way to do it. And so that's, I'm asking if, you know, if there's something we can do to play offense, we should do that. And I'm happy to be a part of it as it relates to districts in my ward, or asking the superintendent to attend. I'll send those emails. But I think that we should play offense, is my point.
Yeah, point taken. And we, we have done kind of more proactive outreach to OKC schools. We can certainly do that for Deer Creek, just kind of make a call.
Well, OKC has the opposite problem. Like, their district is shrinking. They're trying to figure out what to do with buildings they don't need anymore.
Is it, yeah, exactly. It's, it's the opposite problem, but in a lot of ways, it's more difficult to know.
I totally, it's a different problem. I didn't say it's an easier problem. It's a different problem. But for districts that are out there that have been two-A schools for a long time, and here it comes, all of a sudden, these apartments stop, start dropping, you know, on the ground out there, and Piedmont and Deer, and again, I'll just pick on my districts, I mean, it's, it's, it's taxing to them. And who, who, the people get frustrated with? They get frustrated with the city, because who's letting the apartment complex go in? The city is, right? And you guys are burying our schools, they're not going to catch up. So, it'd make me feel better if I could say, we're doing this. Talk to your superintendent. You know, they can issue bonds too, right? So, the other thing I want to mention is similar, I don't know what, for example, I, I pulled this out of my file, which I referenced earlier, which is the Proposed Capital Improvement Plan from twenty nineteen to twenty-third, or twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. And if you look at what's going on in Ward Eight from this piece, there's nothing in this. There's no, there are no planned things out there, and we have a, we have a problem. So, who, what is the process? Who do I talk to, besides Mark Stonecypher, about getting a spotlight put on what's going on out here from an infrastructure standpoint? And, and better yet, something else that interests me is, I don't know what this apartment complex is paying in terms of impact fees. I could do the math if I could figure out the square footage, but it's, it's got to be a significant amount of, of money which is supposed to be used in the area where it's generated. Am I right about this, or am I wrong about this? Where's it, where does it go? Where is this?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and we discussed it a little bit about the neighborhood, at the neighborhood meeting. I forget the exact number, they're paying a hundred and twenty, a hundred, somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand in impact fees. A light costs, it depends, but it can, it's more expensive for the city to put in. It can be three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for an intersection like that. So, there is impact fees, as you know, been in place for a couple of years now, been, been collecting for a couple of years now.
But the, but the developers on the impact fee side, and I'm so sorry to interrupt you, I just want to make clear about this. They can in, and I may have this wrong, light reading, they, they can in lieu of the, the impact fee, they can put the infrastructure in, right? Up to the amount they would have paid. And, and I can tell you this, love and affection for Public Works, a private developer can put a signalized intersection in a lot cheaper...
Yes.
...than Oklahoma City can, hundred percent. So why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we make that deal?
Absolutely. And we, yeah, we talked to the developer about that, and, and, you know, it's still, it's cheaper for them to pay the impact fees, you know, because, yes, they could put in the light, but they're not going to be able, we can only pay them back, or we can only give them credit for the amount of the impact.
The hundred and twenty or fifty, or whatever it is.
So if the light is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, their cost, then, then, you know, they're faced with that choice. So, that, that was the issue there. The traffic, the traffic plan that's being done right now, that you'll, that we'll all be seeing in the coming months, is addressing all of these issues citywide, and it's going to prioritize the location of stoplights, for example. So, I don't yet know how this one's prioritized, but I, I don't expect it'll be too terribly long before that intersection gets a light. Development's happening, and impact fees are designed to coincide with development. That's their, that's the whole purpose. So, you know, so in, in this particular case, it, it, I think it's working, or it looks like it's working like it should, because this corner, they're paying their portion. When the other corner's developed, they'll pay their portion, instead of, you know, one developer being hit with the, okay, you get to put in a light. So, yeah, we did discuss this at the neighborhood meeting, and I, we discussed it staff in advance with the developers, but, you know, in their, in this case, like, hey, we'd rather pay the impact fee. That's what it was designed to do, so that we only have to pay our portion.
It's certainty too, yeah. I, I mean, I understand that. Well, I would like to sit, if you're clearly the knowledgeable one, I'd like to sit down with you and have you walk me through the real world of how these impact fees that are coming from scooters and this development, and, you know, how that goes into the pot, and then where it gets poured back out. I want, I'd need to see that with my own eyes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and, and I think it would help us, there's, I think there's a little bit of a flaw there. If you, if I'm thinking, putting a developer hat on, if I'm a developer and I know that I can get, you know, something accomplished with the city because I agree to put a signalized intersection in, and Jeff knows that it costs him three hundred and fifty, but it costs the developer a hundred and seventy-five to put the same signal in, man, there's a bargain there to be made. It benefits everybody. How you do that, I, I don't have enough knowledge yet to help there, but there's a bargain there to be made, because the city doesn't want to. If it, if it can be done for a hundred and seventy-five, why are we spending three fifty? You know? It's, right now, it's because it's easier for the developer to pay the fee and go on. That's, I think that's where the disconnect is, you know? So, I don't know. Anyway, I'm, I know it's late, I'm sorry. These are just things that are on my mind, and I, I got to have a resolution to it, so... I'll leave the other one alone for now. I'm good.
Traffic's horrible already, anyway.
I, I was just going to say, you know, that the, the other thing that I'd really love to know with certainty is this issue legally, and I, and I want you guys to know this too, because I sort of, I, if somebody emails me, I, I dig through my email box to find emails that look like they're from the public, right? Like, I mean, I, I don't want people to feel like they go unresponded to on issues like this. When people reach out to me about deed applications, like I had last meeting, I had that issue out there, there was a deed application, you know, do a lot split. I'm not supposed to talk to them about that. I, I had a partial conversation before the light bulb went off, and it was like, timeout, I can't talk to you about this, right? So I reached out to Susan and said, hey, do I have this right? Am I not supposed to engage with the public about deed, lot splits and plats? And she said, that's correct. So it's a quasi-judicial thing. I just want to make sure I understand where the root of that law is, and I want to make sure that you guys knew that too, so that you don't fall in the trap of communicating with someone who makes outreach to you, not knowing that you're doing anything wrong, but because you're trying to be responsive to people, you know, to citizens that are reaching out to you. So, that was my other issue I wanted to bring up. So, if you, if, if you could get me something there, I, again, I'm sorry to make work, I'm not, I don't like to do that. I hate when people do it to me, so...
I'll just mention real quick, and we typically will cover that in, in the training that we do annually too, because, you know, it's, it's, it's something that, yeah, it's easy to forget.
That's the reason why, that's how we figured it out.
That was from two years ago, I think, to give Susan, or, well, not misplaced, I think Susan's the one who put it in my hands, but in the front of my meeting book, I have the, that very thing, which is the two thousand and eighteen, our training session. I keep that list right in front, so before I make a motion, I'm like, oh yeah, this is, you know, advisory, or this is, you know, whatever. So anyway, that's the issue, is I was told in this, but I don't know what the root law of that is. So if somebody reaches out to me, I can be more thoughtful, instead of saying, sorry, I can't talk to you about this, it's quasi-judicial. You're basically, that is not what that sounds like to somebody in the public, right? So, anyway, that's all I got, sorry. Done right now.
You know, the only thing I would say about that, first of all, I think it's kind of been honored in the breach low these many years, so if, if that's something that we need to be attentive about, I think it would be a good idea for us all to be attentive about it. But I want to be sure that everybody understands that that door swings both ways. It also means you're not supposed to be talking to the applicant.
Sure. No, I mean, you're not, that's what I'm saying. It's a, and as, in the case of the, in the case of that apartment complex deal, I got a call from, or emails to you, from the area, and responded, and said, you know, can't, you can't talk about this. And I got a call from the applicant, saying, this, this should be, we can't talk about this. I don't care what it should have been, it's great for, for making a difference, but I can't, we talked about it here. As I say, if it is, but that's the problem, is everything else that we do, by, for example, well, eighty percent of our work, you automatically get, or remember, can't do that, and, and explaining is already required, and, and where they should get information, like, correct back to staff, which is a very, a city, right, and you're out of that way, of course.
Did you have something you wanted to say? I thought you were going to speak earlier.
No, earlier, it's a survey, before I could cover it, it's a survey this week.
Okay. Anybody else? I forgot where we were.
Ward Five can beat Ward Eight, Armrest.
I need it, okay. Oh, Susan's the herd. There aren't any of those, we got rid of those guys. Other business adjournment?
Right.
Motion, second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post, we're adjourned.